Bear with me, I'm trying to. All right. All right, good morning, everyone. Thank you so much for being here. Let's see, it is Wednesday, October 12th, 2022. Obviously, we have a packed house. So one of the things that I like to do before we sort of start up. Can you hear me?
Thank you.
All right. Actually, I will address this when we get to that item, so don't mind me at this point. Okay, we're going to start out with a pledge allegiance, and I would love it if Levon Brooks would lead us in the pledge.
How could I still kill him? If you guys say it, I'd get embarrassed. Please, you say it, I'd get embarrassed.
No, I pledge allegiance.
To the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you.
Good job. We don't get to that.
All right, Madam Mayor, we'll move into item A2, which is roll call.
All right, go right ahead.
Councilmember Breckus, absent at this time, doer. Board Three is vacant at this time, Weber. Taylor. Reese. Shevey. Madam Mayor, you do have a quorum of the Reno City Council.
Okay, thank you so much. So we're going to go into public comment. And one of the things, how many public comments do you have in the audience?
This many.
What's this many?
More than 20, probably more than 30.
Okay. So what I would like to do, because I think we can streamline it a little bit better, if we can put a seat right up here, and Madam Clerk, you will call the name, then you'll call the second name, so that you are prepared for the second speaker, and then that kind of makes the flow go a little bit easier. So, let's see, is there an extra chair that we can put right at the dais?
The chairs are chained together, so.
Oh, they're chained together. You can't do that. Maybe the purple one over here. That one's set there, too. Okay, here we go, here we go.
Thank you.
So that's what I would ask. So Madam Clerk will call out the name of the speaker, and then the speaker behind will sit in the chair, and then we'll kind of just rotate like that.
Thank you.
Sound good? Okay.
All right.
Madam Clerk, I'm going to send it right back to you.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. So our first item today is general public comment. It should be noted to those in the audience that comments are to be addressed to the mayor and council as a whole. Comments heard under this item will be limited to three minutes per person and may pertain to matters both on and off the council's agenda. Please note that council may not take action upon any matter not agendized on today's agenda. When you are called on for public comment, please state your name for the record and begin speaking. The timer will begin when you say your name, and you will be afforded three minutes. If you're an attendee in the Zoom meeting and would like to make public comment, please raise your hand at this time. Lastly, while in this room, please be respectful. Warnings will be issued by the presiding officer if there is disruptive behavior, and you will be asked to leave chambers if the behavior continues. Our first public commenter today is Levon Reed, followed by Kai Plaskin.
Okay, thank you. And I just want to remind the speakers, you have three minutes, and I'm going to be pretty strict on it because we are challenged for time, and I want to make sure everyone has equal amount of time. So come on up, Levon.
Good morning, Mayor, and good morning, Reno Council. And Mayor, I'd like to wish you a happy birthday today. And I'd like to say, the mayor has been in office almost eight years now, and I'd like to say, show some of her accolades of the things she has done to improve Reno. People seem to forget that we used to have a lot of strippers, a lot of hookers, and a lot of drug trafficking, sex trafficking here in Reno that was really getting really out of hand. So I'm glad she's improved a lot of that. She's initiated the ambassador, cap ambassador group that goes around patrolling and cleaning up a bunch of the homeless and the people undesirable in downtown Reno. So that's very improved. I like that. I also improved, she has done the Midtown. She's cleaned that up a lot. And it is so nice to go down Midtown and see that you can go through all the little stores and feel safe. But the one thing I want to challenge the mayor about is about these pot lounges. I think all these pot dispensaries that are doing them, why don't we make them run their office or their little stores and make them police these pot people who will be out partying and could cause havoc for our community? So if we got these pot dispensaries making and profiting, then they should be the ones to run these little lounges and make them secure and make them strict rules and really tight against them, so they can't cause havoc for our community. And I want to encourage the mayor to keep more police officers and more fire department people around, because we need more and more increase as our community's growing. We're causing, we're having the problems of big cities now with a lot of people running amok with guns and getting violent. So we need to encourage to increase the police patrol, we need to increase the fire department, and we need to encourage a lot of people in our community to be proud of our Reno Council. They do a good job. I'm glad we got rid of two of them. There's a third, Ms. Buckus, I'd like to see her leave quickly. But other than that, I think the new people who are coming, we need to be encouraging the mayor, encouraging the Reno Council, and we need to keep to your focus on the agendas that need to be taken care of for Reno, not their personal agendas. So Ms. Taylor, I welcome you, and I pray that you will learn from this mayor, and the two people that we appoint over the next few years, that they will step up and help the mayor and help this council do what needs to be done for Reno. Because Sparks follows Reno. I live in Sparks, and I am well aware of that. So please, encourage the mayor, be supportive of her. Know she has done a lot in almost eight years, and we can be so proud of Mayor Hillary Shevey. Thank you.
Thank you, Levon. Thank you. Good morning, Kai.
Good morning.
Nice to see you.
Good to see you, too. Happy birthday.
Don't remind me.
Sorry.
Childhood trauma, childhood trauma.
I know. Same goes for me, too.
Kai, if you'll give me just a second, I apologize. So our next person up is Jerry Mifsud.
Kai Plaskin, I'm here as a citizen today, and just somebody who wants a healthier community, here to speak on behalf of Award Three candidate. I've never done this before, and this is really inspiring, because I think there's a lot of people who are here to speak on behalf of candidates. How many of you are here to speak on behalf of a candidate? It's a lot. It's amazing. It's really inspiring and cool. And so, you know, you all know that making a change is really hard as elected officials, and you have to be bold, and you got to bring new ideas to the table, you got to take risks, and you have to cooperate with others and listen and have boundless energy, right? And Jamie Chapman, she introduced herself to me the first time as Jaime, and she has that boundless energy. She has all of those things. And she's making a change in our city, and who would she make a change on behalf of? Well, it's the people that she's talking to every single day, which are small businesses and the people on the street. She spends all of her time out on the street, talking to people, and trying to make connections with businesses. Reminds me a little bit of when Mayor Hillary Shevey first ran. She's making those connections on a daily basis. She's out on the street every day, talking to customers. And when the city had a negative experience in the past with pedicabs, she turned that around with staff here in the city. Like, she worked with city to change that perspective. She's out on the street every day, kind of to replace Oscar Delgado in Ward Three. Thank you very much.
All right, thank you so much.
Jerry Misfud, Mifsud, followed by Tyler Colton.
Not going to be good, Hillary. Can you punch yourself? Sorry to take up your time. I told everybody in the audience that it was your birthday today, Hillary. I never thought that anything in my life would match the physical and emotional pain I suffered as a six-year-old child by being molested by my father for six years, until now. At 77, I'm put through a hell of equal measures since the May 18th meeting when I was thrown out of here because my shirt was open. There was no dress code then, there may be one now. Don't tell me that, Devin. Okay, now to now. A powerful authority, the mayor figure. I expect, I've been hugely let down, because we met on September 27th, me, you, and Mr. Hall. In its four months, I've been in the hospital four times with high blood pressure, like I don't have it now, and heart issues, all relating to the day of Devin's mistake. I initiated that meeting. It took four months of stalling and hiding from me, Mayor. When Carl over here, he handled all that. He... I appeal to you, Mayor. You suggested in that meeting that the city council makes that determination, because every time you told me Carl admires you, he got more and more red-faced. You had to see that. He almost had another meltdown in there, and he kept saying, "No money." You asked me, "How much money do you want?" He's answering for you. I want to appear before the city council and let them determine that, like you suggested. But guess what? Who runs this city? Carl does, because he just told me moments ago that there is, that's not going to happen. He decides for you, he advises you. He doesn't decide for you. But Carl, I upstaged Carl in court one other time when he was going after some punk that hit me, and he made a deal with that attorney to let that punk off the hook until the judge read that punk's priors, and the hush ran through the courtroom, and I pushed the city attorney aside, and I defended myself, just like I'm doing today. If anybody wishes to contact me, you could see my, I'm appealing to any attorney, pro bono or contingency. I'm appealing to any media, either be it the radio or printed, to get ahold of me through this P.O. box. I want to bring an action against the city now, because now I know that that meeting's not going to happen, that you said could happen. But Carl over here, he says it's not going to happen. He told me that moments ago. He's deciding for you, Mayor, and that's not right. You once told me you can't control, I can't control him, meaning Carl. I know what's going on here, and that's what you don't like about me. I know what you haven't done in Teglia Park, that I told you for four years, and now you're doing it, according to Attorney Reese over here. I have a little time to spare. I ask you to do something proactive, Mayor. If you're the leader and show a leadership role. You called me your friend, Hillary. I go, "Why isn't something being done to address, to assess the damages done to me and address this?"
Thank you. Thank you, Jerry.
Tyler Colton, followed by Terry Brooks.
The whole truth and nothing but the truth.
All right, good morning. My name's Tyler Colton. I live in Ward Three. I have a business, The Emerson, in Ward One. I've had the pleasure of having, meeting most of you and having you in my establishment. I wanted to talk about the Midtown-Virginia corridor, the median. Devin Reese and I had had a meeting, this is over four years ago, with RTC, discussing that and how we wanted that out, how it's making it difficult for turns. I think there's already been a study on the excessive speed going on by UNR that was funded. The median, I'm at Martin Street, the median there has do-not-turn signs. It has been run over so many times, it has never been replaced again, because they've stopped trying to replace it. The roundabout, while I love the sculpture and I think is really beautiful and amazing, has become difficult. You can see the RTC did a poor job of even getting the buses through there. Bad Apple has been hit three times in the last year. My patio was wiped out by a driver coming out of the Midtown, out of the roundabout as well. I had fire in recently to do my check. Fire Department does not like the median as well. There is one way to cross from the east side to the west side, and that is it, in that one-mile stretch, making it difficult for businesses. The other thing is, RTC planned it for RTC. They did not plan any commercial parking for any businesses in Midtown. As a growing Midtown, a median should be removed. Ideally, I'm in favor of Ward Three. I support Jamie Chapman, and I support her idea of creating that Virginia Street become one-way from north to south, using center going south to north, creating more bike lanes and parking through Midtown, making it much more accessible for the whole community and for the Midtown District and everyone to enjoy, as well as much safer for people and pedestrians crossing and using the area. So that's my Midtown. How long do I have? All right, so my second thing is, there is this ordinance, that is a sound ordinance, that says at 10 o'clock, "You've all discussed wanting to grow Reno and have bigger events. How do we do that? How do we have festivals when the sound and music must stop at 10 o'clock?" That goes for speakers. Bingo outside. I host a lot of charity events with Bingo. We can't even have that after 10 o'clock. I propose that, and this could be changed right away, because this wasn't set by council, it's not voted on as a law, it was set by the department, Business Department. The music must stop at 10 o'clock. It can be changed today, so that in the Midtown corridor or the Virginia Street corridor, all through downtown into Midtown, I propose it ends at midnight, allowing us who own bars, who pay a fee, I own, have a parking lot, I have to pay nearly $400 to host events in my parking lot, and then end the music at 10 o'clock? I'm a bar, and anyone who's in there under 30 years old, they're getting started at 10 o'clock. So I'm paying money to shut down when I'm supposed to be getting started. So I'd like to see that changed. My other thing is, with Washoe County Health Department, they seem to have no oversight. They run by themselves, and the council or anyone else cannot seem to reel them in. For me to serve just ice outside, I have to pay an additional $180. I need an inspection, a tent, just to serve ice when I've already paid the city $400 to have my event outside, and it's another additional $180. So I'd like to see some oversight for Washoe County Health and see how we can change that. Thank you.
All right, thank you.
Terry Brooks, followed by Ilya Arbutman.
Good morning, it's me, Terry Brooks, again, and today I'd like to address following politics to health care when it comes to homelessness. Some politicians supported disability insurance back in 1956, but others did not support it, creating a few conflicts. Then in 1965, some politicians supported Medicare, which helped a lot of elderly people to receive a lot of care. But there were some politicians who did not support Medicare, for the rich to help support the elderly they didn't think was fair. And in 1965, some politicians supported Medicaid, which helped a lot of poor people to receive a lot of aid. But there were some politicians who did not support Medicaid. They didn't want the poor to receive something for which they had not paid. Then more recently came ACA, the Affordable Care Act, which some politicians backed while other politicians attacked. People who are elderly are more susceptible to illness, as are people who are poor or people who are homeless. Some say our health care system is biased against the elderly and the poor, while others say the federal government should not help the elderly or the poor. When the elderly and the poor are sick and about to die, and some politicians don't want to help them, I have to wonder why. Everyone has a right to live and to do so in good health, even if they're old or poor, regardless of their lack of wealth. If someone does not want to help someone else who is in need, why won't they help them? Is it because of their greed? Maybe it's because they do not want such people to help make this election when it comes time to vote in the next election. I would like to thank you all for listening to me today, and I look forward to coming back when I have even more to say.
I think this one's my favorite. I'm going to go with this one's my favorite.
What's that?
I'm going with this one's my favorite.
Okay. Oh, I like your ads on TV, too.
Where are we at?
Oh, last time I was here, I did Chapter 39, and I think I misspoke and said nine, because I had my thumb over the three in 39. So this is Chapter 40. And now for the countdown, you might be glad to know, I've only got six more chapters to go.
To go, of course, of course, and I can't wait to publish them. All right, thank you. Great job.
Ilya Arbutman, followed by Bill Sims.
Morning, Ilya Arbutman. For the record, Ward Three resident, I'm the Chair of the Ward Three Neighborhood Advisory Board. I work in Ward Three, and I'm also co-owner of a small business in Ward Three. So I'm here to talk about the Ward Three appointment for the vacancy. I think that Devin, Councilmember Reese came and spoke to the NAB the other day and referred to this process as a job interview. I don't necessarily disagree with that, however, I want to clarify one thing, right? The person that you're hiring for this position is not working for you, for the city, for the city council, right? They're working for the city of Reno, which means that if you're interviewing them for the position, that's the only thing really to keep in mind, not whether or not they agree with you or disagree with you, but whether or not their voice will add to the discussion on council and better represent the residents of the city. So in light of that, I'm endorsing Lilly Baron for Ward Three. And the reason I'm endorsing Lilly should be obvious, right? She's kind of the only person that I see in the applicant pool that is essentially already doing the work, right, that she would be doing up there. And whether or not she gets picked for the endorsement, she will continue doing that work. And what do I mean? I mean hosting a community garden at her house, right, which is a resource for the community. She does policy work for the ACLU. She's done kind of a local feature radio show on the community radio station where she's featured local activists and community organizers. She's done tireless work for the unhoused and the unsheltered. I mean, the list really does go on, but beyond kind of all of the specific qualifications, I think is also the fact that, you know, Lilly is someone who I think is not here, kind of like as a business owner, she's not here sort of in the interests of what someone troublingly said is selling the city, right? The city's not a commodity to be sold. That's not really what we're in the business of doing here, right? We're in the business of serving the city's residents. I think even the notion of selling the city is a complete misunderstanding, right? Because if we're selling it to Jacobs, for example, right, I'm sure there's plenty of people here that wouldn't be happy about a sale like that. So I think rather than selling the city, right, Lilly's here to kind of, you know, serve the city, listen to the people who live here, and find out how to make this a better place to live. I'd also like to mention, just as a very important part of this process, and Jamie is my neighbor, so no hard feelings, Jamie, but there's no such thing as diversity of the mind, right? We need real diversity on the city council, and that, as a woman of color, Lilly will certainly bring that to a council that is sorely in need of that. Finally, we're getting to the point, we're looking up here, we're kind of like almost 50-50 appointments and elected representatives, right, because including the city manager, Ward Five, Ward Three. So it is a little bit troubling. So I will say that the appointment process, to me, does seem like, if at a certain point we're kind of five appointees and four or and three, and two representatives, that starts to weigh things against kind of the democratic process, obviously, that we need in the city. So I will say, listen to the people here today, right, because I think the people who are willing to come to council to speak in favor of a candidate, right, are the people who are essentially, it's a bit of a stand-in for voting, but it is something, right? So listen to the people here today and actually take that to heart. Don't just kind, you know, nod politely and then do what you were going to do anyway, because we are the people that ultimately the council member will be serving. Thank you.
Thanks, Ilya. All right, next.
Bill Sims, followed by Ron Trevor.
Okay, Ron, this is you next. Because you are that good. I love you. You're so good, Ron. Okay, go ahead.
Morning, Madam Mayor, council members. Like my friend Ilya, I am also here to endorse my good friend Lilly, pretty much exactly word for word on what he said, and he said it much better than I can say it. But I also just wanted to throw in that I endorse Lilly, because I've seen her in person, I've seen the work that she's done, I've actually been with her personally on having to be defended from the city for wanting to criminalize homeless people, you know, just standing out trying to gather sun during the summer, you know, in the shade and everything. And so I also just want to say that with the kind of person Lilly is, she's empathetic, she's sympathetic, she's kind-hearted, she's smart, she's intelligent, she's a very, you know, well-coordinated, eloquent person who knows what she wants to do in helping the cities. She knows that she wants to help our constituents first and not have a city council that would circumvent our democratic process to vote on a new ward representative. And I think having someone like that on the ward council, city council, would be really helpful, because she is someone that listens to the people, and she will make her voice heard for everyone else in Ward Three and Reno in general. And also, I just wanted to make another comment in reply to a previous commentary that, first off, sex work is work. It's nothing to be ashamed of. It's a job. No one should be ashamed for it. Also, as well as, no one should be ashamed for living in poverty and not having a permanent roof over your head like you do. I'm not saying that directly to you guys, just in direct response to a comment that was made earlier. No one should be ashamed for their living situation, and no one should be ashamed for being a stripper or anything involved in the sex work industry, because it is a job, and that is okay. No one should be ashamed for that. Thank you.
All right, thank you, sir.
Ron Trevor, followed by...
Could we start having them say their names, so we know who is speaking?
Absolutely, thank you.
Thank you.
Ron Trevor, followed by Katie Calling. And again, please state your name for the record.
Yes, good morning. My name is Ron Trevor, and I'd like to thank the council for allowing me to speak this morning. And before I start, Mayor Shevey, happy birthday.
Oh, very kind.
I'm a volunteer for SAVE, which stands for the Senior Auxiliary Volunteer Effort, that works with the Reno Police Department. And today I've got the recaps from third-quarter totals for 2022. SAVE currently has 61 active volunteers. We have another six in training. During the third quarter, there was a total of 3,658 hours volunteered by members of SAVE. This represents a savings of $95,766 and change to the city of Reno. Some of the key areas that were covered during this timeframe, we had 3,658 citizen contacts, 1,314 48-hour notices on abandoned vehicles, 304 school patrols, handicap violation citations, 116 administered. We're now doing parking enforcement, parking, permit parking enforcement up at UNR. We had 30 of those. Traffic surveys, 83, and stolen vehicles or fictitious plates located and reported to RPD was 10. And that's what I have today. Thank you. And are there any questions?
Do you have any questions?
No, thank you.
I want to say thank you so much for your service. You guys have done a tremendous job. And I know you get up here and you talk about kind of what you're doing, but the volunteer work on the outside that other people don't see, I just need to commend all of those hours that you put your whole team together, and there's a lot of tough jobs that you guys all do. So I want you to know, thank you, thank you so much.
Thank you. We do have a little fun coming up. We pass out candy for Halloween, so.
When is that? Because we do trunk-or-treat?
Yeah, we're going to do trunk-or-treat, and then also Halloween as well.
Oh, you're going to do?
Yeah, we have four cars out with passing out candy that's been donated by the community.
All right, thank you so much. We always love having you.
Katie Calling, followed by Nicholas Shepack.
Hello, my name is Katie Calling. I live in Ward Three, and I am also a small business owner, so I guess that counts these days. So can we turn this bad boy on, just so everybody can see what I'm talking about? This was a report on homelessness and low-income housing in our community that Lilly Baron co-authored. And not only does it have an analysis, a discussion, and a researched, backed data about our community and homelessness, but it also has a ridiculous amount of recommendations, recommendations that she's already working on, recommendations that we are already working on. So y'all just need to come on board. This little thing can be found at washoehousingjusticeunion.org for anybody who wants to look at it. But my point is, is that she's got, she's done the work, researched what's wrong, major problem in our community, which is housing. You know that. problem in our community, which is housing, you know that. So I don't see why she wouldn't be a great candidate for Ward Three. I think it would be a mistake. And I know that you have a solid voting base that you don't want to tamper with, but the fact of the matter is, there's a lot of other of us that are not voting for you. We're not voting because we don't have trust in the system anymore. We will vote for her. So that's all I have to say.
Thank you so much, Katie.
Nicholas Sheepack, followed by Geralda Miller.
Hello, thank you, Mayor, City Council, happy birthday. My name is Nick Sheepack, I am a proud resident of Ward Three. I live on East Taylor Street, right by the VA Hospital. I see many qualified candidates here today, I know many of them. Ms. McKinney is a dear friend of mine and I know she's extremely qualified. I'm here today to talk mostly about, in my limited time, Lilly Baron and why I think that Lilly Baron is the best representative for the ward I love so much. And really, I'm going to take a different perspective. You're going to hear about her endless work with the homeless, you're going to hear about the endless work with the community garden and how she feeds people. But I have had the immense pleasure of getting to work with her on a professional level, starting when she was an attache for Assemblywoman Armstrong. And if you've ever had the pleasure of meeting Assemblywoman Summers Armstrong, you know that you do not want to be the person that runs her calendar. She is one of the most fierce advocates I have ever met and everything is absolutely perfect. And she ran that for an entire hundred twenty-day session, which is a complete sprint like a champion. She moved from there to the ACLU, where I had the opportunity to work with her while I was at the ACLU, where I watched her take meetings with city committees like CHAB, run to a meeting where she talked directly to the Director of the Department of Corrections, when then she would then go and find every single item of interest on city and county boards from across the state, only to finish that day by going out, working in the garden, flipping over a whole pile of manure, taking her thirteen-year-old son to every single community event. I am guaranteed to see one person or two people at every community event, it's Bob Conrad and Lilly Baron, they are going to be at, you cannot escape them. And she brings her thirteen-year-old son, who is the kindest, smartest person I've ever met, and I cannot fathom how somebody who has done so much and stays so busy has been able to raise such an amazing kid. The thing is, if you do not choose her, she's still going to be here every day, she's still going to be in the community every day. She is the face of Ward Three. She is the one doing the work on the ground, at the state level and at the county level and not just this county. And we would be honored to have her here. And it might not be the easiest person for you to work with all the time, but it is a person you can work with, a person that will listen, a person that will take you seriously, a person that will give valid ideas. You can have an opportunity to do what's right or what's easy, and what's easy may be very good, but what's right, I think today will become abundantly clear. Thank you.
All right, thanks, Nick.
Geralda Miller, followed by Jamie Chapman.
It's our arts and culture superstar.
Well, good morning, everybody. I am Geralda Miller and I am an arts advocate. I am one of your advisors on the Reno Arts and Culture Commission. And I am here, number one, to say goodbye. My term ends this month. I have attended my last Public Art Committee meeting and next week I attend my last Reno Arts and Culture Commission meeting. I would like to say it has been a pleasure advising you and being one of the advisors. As you know, I served as the Chair of the Commission. Thank you, Naomi Dour, for in 2015 recommending me for the Commission. It has been a pleasure. Over this time, I would have to say, I am very proud of the fact that, Mayor Shavey, when you came to office, you said that you wanted Reno to become, and I'm getting emotional, an arts destination. I am proud to say, we are getting there. You see more murals in the city, you see more sculptures in our city, you see more electrical boxes, you see more art everywhere. And that's because the Reno Arts and Culture Commission follows your charge and we are doing it. So I really want to encourage you to continue to support our city and the arts in our city. Another thing, I am very proud of the fact that I have been a broken record about diversity, equity, and inclusion on our commission. I am proud to tell you that six of the nine members are people of color. Three African-Americans, including Lilly Baron, an Asian-American, Native-American, Latino, we have that. I would love to see that up here as well. I believe in the importance of diversity, equity, and inclusion in our city. And that is one of the things I have pushed like a broken record and I will continue to push for our city as well. I'm not going anywhere, I'm still the Executive Director for the Arts Spot Reno, but I will tell you, in that, last week I gave a tour to a journalist from Ohio. Next week I'm giving a tour to a group that's visiting us from Germany. If there's somebody here, I am serving as your arts ambassador and I continue to push the importance of arts in Reno. We are a beautiful city, we have lots of art, and I want us to continue to push that. But we need all of you up there to support the arts as well. The last thing that I'm going to push is a winter lights festival. We did not, we were not successful in accomplishing that, but we need the Arts Commission, all of you, and RSCVA to get together and make an arts winter lights festival happen in the month of February. Thank you so much. Adios.
No, it's not goodbye. It's not goodbye, because you know, I have ten things I would love for you to do and I still have my eye on it.
I know you do.
You're not going anywhere, my friend.
And Madam Mayor, I know I'm out of order, but I just want to thank Geralda for her service.
I can't believe it's already up.
You stepping up was remarkable and you're right about how diverse the Arts and Culture Commission is and it is in large part due to you helping me recruit people for that. I served as a liaison for eight years almost and I think we have an outstanding group there, so thank you, Madam.
But I want to say, you know, what I thought, because I was on that board and what I thought really changed the whole dynamic of Reno was Arts Spot. And you brought that, how long ago was that, maybe ten years ago?
Yes, that was twenty, twenty-fourteen.
Yes, it was unbelievable. That sort of changed so much of the dynamic of what we're doing in arts and culture. And Geralda, I just, I cannot thank you enough for your service, you have been tremendous and I am so proud. I think you, you know, it's going to be hard to fill your shoes in so many ways. I'm really proud that Lilly is on there and I know that they're going to take it to the next level, but you have done a phenomenal job. But like I said, you're not going anywhere because there's one place I have to have you, you're amazing and all that you do. And I think, Jamie, you're working on a lights festival, so I couldn't agree with you more. I want to tell you, I also heard tremendous things about you at the RSCVA the other day that you were the ultimate rock star.
Great, I'm happy to hear that.
So, anyway, thank you so much.
All right, thank you.
You're right, this is not goodbye, for sure.
Up, up and away, Geralda.
Jamie Chapman, followed by Craig Parish, followed by Britten Griffiths.
Hi, everyone, for the record, I'm Jamie Chapman. I also want to thank Geralda because Arts Spot has really helped me in my small business. But I am here to talk about Let It Glow Reno, which is a free, family-friendly, community event that brings districts and businesses together this holiday season to make Reno glow. We want to invite locals and tourists back to the heart of Reno to shop at our local stores and experience our arts and culture all December long. Let It Glow Reno is a holiday light competition between Midtown Reno, Downtown Reno, Riverwalk District, Brewery District, Wells Avenue, and the Glow Plaza and the businesses within those districts. Our goal is to attract locals and visitors by car, foot, bike, pedicab, bus, scooter, all to Reno this holiday season. We are asking any and all businesses participate, the businesses in these areas, but we are also asking for businesses that are located outside of one of these areas mentioned above, or the ones that don't have a brick and mortar to also get involved by becoming a sponsor or partnering with one of the businesses in these areas. We are going to make Reno glow from December first through January eighth and we are asking the community and a panel of judges to vote between December first and the fifteenth in different categories. The categories include most Reno, most Griswold, most creative, best in district, most lit district, and more. Throughout the month of December, we will be having several different parties highlighting and encouraging patrons to visit specific areas of town. We are going to have a couple other representatives from those districts come up and talk about what that's going to look like. But for now, we're asking each and every one of you and the city of Reno to please get involved and help us make Reno glow this holiday season. We would also like to invite the community and business owners to please sign up. You can get more information at letitgloreno.com. Thank you.
That is so great, I'm such a big fan. It's awesome. Good job.
Craig Parish, followed by Britten Griffiths.
Good morning, my name is Craig and I am the President of the Midtown District and have been on the board there for several years and I am here in support of the efforts with Jamie and the Let It Glow. We just heard about the need for a light festival and what that could look like. Midtown is continuing to experience the fruit of the Virginia Street Project, the widened sidewalks. And as I've kind of looked at kind of this canvas and just started thinking about all the possibilities that there could be, the wheels started spinning and coming up with different ideas. And one of those was to have a tree lighting event, a Midtown holiday party. And we did that and then COVID hit and we took a few years off and we did it last year and we had two thousand people come out for that event alone. We are actually hosting two tree lighting parties in Midtown to kick off the Let It Glow event on December first, one on the north side at Livingstone's Church and one on the south side. So bringing thousands of people to walk up and down the corridor, they're benefiting and helping all the local businesses and appreciating all the art and the installations that have taken place. One of the ideas that I had with this is with all these light poles, I was like, man, when you think about cities and the sense of warmth and community, one of the things when I was looking at images is lights. And putting lights on those light poles, and I started doing research and I found that buying large snowflakes and putting those on the light poles is incredibly expensive. And I was like, there's no way we can do this as a volunteer organization. But I found somebody and we actually manufactured forty of them ourself at a reasonable cost and so we are looking forward to lighting up Midtown with forty-three-foot lighted snowflakes that'll be going up and down the corridor as part of the Let It Glow event. And I think what I love about the Let It Glow is it's really about this collaborative spirit. Putting lights in darkness is about hope. And we are a culture that is so divided, so many different things. And one of the things I love, working with Midtown and this kind of a project, is we get people with different perspectives working together to really promote the city of Reno as a place that people love to come and want to be a part of. And so that creates a sense of place and belonging. And so I'm just asking for you guys' support, really for this grassroots volunteer effort. And I would love, just imagine what this looks like for the month of December, Reno glowing in the warmth and sense of community. So, thank you.
Love it, thank you so much.
Britten Griffiths.
Good morning, Mayor and councilpersons. For the record, my name is Britten Griffiths, I'm here today as the President of the Riverwalk District, a founding board member of the Downtown Reno Partnership and their Marketing Chair. I am here today to hope to get all of your support, bring your constituents down, and also to ask for some funding for our Let It Glow Reno. We also have some other supporters here in the room that represent the other districts, but we know it's a really busy day, so we didn't want to take up too much time. As you know, it is very rare that all of our districts are umbrellaed under one event. We are very close in proximity, we don't always support one another or share events, so we're thankful to Jamie to coming up with this event so we are unified once again. We are also just thankful for our neighbors, the Midtown District, Brewery District, and others to come together to bring back tourists, families, locals, and to bring some light back to downtown and light up the city that we all love. With that, again, please just follow us so that you can get support and this will be an event that goes on for an entire month. This is my favorite phrase, compassionate commerce, and this time we get to do it collaboratively throughout the city. We also expect this to be an inaugural event so that the snowflakes that Greg talked about are a big investment and very hard for small businesses to do, that we can expand that and make every street in Reno Main Street and make all districts equally important. As a side note, I think many of you know that I have a very big experience in the appointment process. I would say I am an expert in the appointment process. With that, I just wanted to say I'm so thankful to see that Sean's here, I'm very thankful to see that Lilly is here. If you have not read the homelessness report, please do, I have some in my office, I'm on the fourteenth floor. And to my dear friend Courtney, I'm just so thankful that you guys are all here, good luck, it's really hard, it's tough, and we are here to support you as a community. So with that, thank you to Jamie for bringing us together today, thank you all for supporting and hopefully we can make this holiday the brightest that we have for everyone, including the unsheltered, our families, and those that have a regional impact on our community.
Thank you, Britten, nice job.
Leslie Riley, followed by Connor McQuivie.
Hi, good morning, guys. My name is Leslie Riley, my first city council meeting.
Hi, welcome.
Thanks. Okay, so I'm here to support my friend Courtney McKinney for the seat. She is amazing. I met Courtney through her wife, Holly, she's a close friend of our family. I am a small business owner and I'm a real estate agent. And I also recently worked with Holly and Courtney to buy a home in Ward Three. They have, when they asked me to help them find a place in Reno to call home, Ward Three was the priority, they were renting previously in the ward, so it was basically all they really needed. They wanted to stay in Ward Three because they love their neighborhood and the people in it. Courtney specifically told me they loved the walkability of their neighborhood, the surrounding park areas and other small businesses along Wells Avenue. As a real estate agent, people are often just looking for the best house or the best deal or something like that, but choosing to stay in their neighborhood was at the top of their priority list. Courtney has been involved in a number of leading issues at the state and local level, she cares deeply about making Nevada the best place for everybody. That's what inspired her to join the Nevada Army National Guard. And she is, and that's why she's put her name in the process for this position. I know she can work well with all people of political backgrounds and she is selected, if she's selected for the position, it will be her full-time job and she will dedicate all her time to her work. One of the most impressive things about Courtney is that she's done so much, like she's done so much stuff in her life and she's so young. And she'll be a great representative for all the younger citizens. I'm sure that the residents of Ward Three will get to know her and be just as impressed as I always am. Thank you.
Thank you so much.
Connor McQuivie, followed by Miguel Martinez.
Connor, good morning.
Good morning, City Council. Good to see you all, happy birthday, Mayor.
Oh, thank you. I'm getting traumatized every time you say that. Thank you so much.
It's good to be back doing public comment. Last time I was here, I was advocating for a special election rather than the appointment process in the Ward Five seat. I talked to all of the finalists in the Ward Five seat to try to share their information with the public. I will talk a little bit about myself first. I'm not here to plug my podcast, although I am wearing my shirt. I started a podcast about a year and a half ago.
Which I love it.
Where I interview people from Reno and I did not have that much connection with the local government, I didn't know a lot of people politically here in town at that time. And I've spent the last year and a half basically being a, an observer of the conversations that are happening in our city and participating in them. I'm not really an activist or an advocate, I really tried to just have the conversations and share the information. And I've talked to more than half of our city council, I've had a couple of the candidates for this seat on the podcast, so I feel like I've talked to a lot of people and generally gotten a good idea of what the conversations are that are happening in our city. And I also follow a lot online of our kind of alternative media and a lot of our activist community. There is constantly a conversation in our city about homelessness, about how we're taking care of our most vulnerable citizens. And I see that conversation happening in one place and it is not on this dais. I see that conversation happening in our community, among our activist community, but it's not always happening up here. I'm glad that during this appointment process for Ward Three, we have a packed house, like people are participating, people want to be heard. There are a lot of people in here who want to be actively engaged with what's going on in the city. on in the city, and it's hard to do that when there is what feels like a wall between the city council-type people and the activist-type people. I think that putting Lilly Barron on the council will bring those conversations from the debates online and the criticisms that don't actually result in compromise and getting things done and working together, to actually making that happen. I think that's really important, that these conversations that I'm seeing all of the time aren't just separate from the actual business of running our city. Lilly has done, as everyone has said, an incredible job of being the voice of the community. I think that the most important thing a city council member can do is listen to their constituents and then come up here and share their constituents' views. I mentioned it is a packed house tonight. There is one notable absence. I live in Ward 1, and it's unfortunate that I see an empty seat right there, but I think that having someone like Lilly who is clearly, clearly the most connected with the members or the citizens of Ward 3, especially the most vulnerable up on the council, just makes sense. If we want someone who represents the community, who's doing the work, she's right there. So I encourage you to support Lilly, at least, at the very least, to make her a finalist so that more people can hear from her, learn about her in this important decision. Thank you.
Thanks, Connor.
Miguel Martinez, followed by Jody Baden.
Hi, good morning, Miguel Martinez. For the record, Buenos dias. My name, Honorable City Council and Madam Mayor, my name is Miguel Martinez. Mi nombre es Miguel Martinez, and I submitted an application to fill the Ward 3 vacancy. Thank you for the opportunity today. You speak a little bit about myself, who I am, where I come from, and the opportunity to be an applicant. I was born and raised in Reno, Nevada, more specifically in Ward 3, off of Moana Lane and Kitsky Lane, near the Philadelphia Cheese Steak, if you all are familiar with that area on the Mobile Park. I lived there until about sixth grade, when my parents had the opportunity to fulfill their American dream, and they purchased a home in North Valleys and moved my family and I out there. I'm proud to say that I'm a graduate of the public K-16 school system here in northern Nevada, and I hold a master's degree in education from Virginia Tech. I want to be selected as a Ward 3 council member because I want to continue serving the community. I want to continue the great work that Oscar Delgado had been involved with, specifically working towards improving the lives of our underrepresented constituents. I believe that my lived experiences provided me an avenue to organically represent the ward. I am happily married to my college sweetheart, and we have two beautiful, strong little girls, which I hope to raise to be community leaders one day, and maybe even filling your seat, Madam Mayor, or anyone else's seat on the council. Growing up in Reno afforded me with the insights into the unique characteristics, traditions, and the future of our community. As a father and homeowner, I want to keep Reno as a place to raise a family, expand businesses, and improve our infrastructure. I would like to be appointed to the council to represent the interests of Ward 3 in local policy decisions, budget allocations, and advancing the work of the council. I have professional experience in administration, am involved with multiple nonprofits, and have a proven track record of improving the lives of Reno residents. I will be a great representative of the residents of Ward 3, a good steward of our resources, and inclusive of our collective voices. Muchas gracias. Thank you so much for the time. Adios.
Thank you so much. Thank you.
Jody Baden, followed by Megan O'Farrell. We'll get it up there, if you'll just leave it right there for us.
Perfect. I'm not a techie. Okay, good morning. My name is Jody Baden, and Mayor, City Council members, thank you. I have a unique appreciation for what you do because from 2001 to 2008, I was on the Washoe County School Board with a different name, Rogero, so you might remember that. I took a 12-year detour to Florida, and happy to be back here, as you can imagine, especially now. I feel a little bit like Rumpelstiltskin waking up. It's familiar but different, but I'm still happy to be here. As you know, there's plenty of disinformation, misinformation, and actually outright lying going on in our public forum, especially with politics. You all are very aware, because you're elected officials, that to run for office, you do not have to have a background check. Now, most people are shocked when I ask them if they know this. They really can't believe it. They think candidates are vetted upon filing, but as you know, that's not the case. No background checks are required to run for office, except probably elected sheriffs and judges who have another process. The public really is in the dark about this. They have no idea. In fact, our US Senators and US Congressmen do not have to have background checks unless they're on committees that require it. And of course, the President doesn't either, which I think is astounding. So voters really want transparency. We're seeing this in a lot of places, government, politics, and 92% of employers require a background check. Now, we all know people who run for office who couldn't get a job at a big box store. This is the truth. So the Transparency in Politics Certification Program is a new nonpartisan voter education program. So here's how it works. Candidates are given the opportunity to run background checks on themselves, pay for and order them. If they review them and feel comfortable, then they can post them on the Transparency in Politics website. There are no editorial comments and no further vetting. It's simply, did you do the background check or not? And here it is. So it gives voters some degree of confidence and that the candidate is willing to be transparent. So trust in politics starts with transparency, and the Transparency in Politics Certification Program is one piece of that. So I'm going to give brochures to the clerk for you all and business cards, and I look forward to your input. Thank you for allowing me to present information on how to make politics more transparent. Thank you.
Thank you. Welcome back to Reno.
Thank you. Glad to be here.
Megan O'Farrell, followed by Natalie Handler.
Hi, Megan.
Good morning. Thanks for having me today. For the record, my name is Megan O'Farrell, and I'm here today to endorse Lilly Barron for the Ward 3 council seat. I've had the pleasure of working alongside Lilly for several years now on food justice projects, fair housing initiatives, representative policy building, police and racial justice accountability, and more than I can share in three minutes. She carries the weight of our whole community on our shoulders, and she does it tirelessly because she truly believes in community care. She understands the need for accountability and transparency, and she isn't afraid to stand up for what is right. In my opinion, there's not a better person to have this seat, and the opportunities for real tangible change in our city are innumerable when you have someone like Lilly willing to show up every day with her sleeves rolled up and solutions in hand. I cannot preface enough the importance of having real lived experience representation in our local government. As we say time and time again, and as I've stood in front of you before, the folks closest to the problems also have the answers to the problems. As a black woman, a mother, a renter, a former business owner, an artist, a policy fellow, and a victim of poverty and racial disparities, Lilly is a staunch advocate for the voices that are often left out of the conversation, and we desperately need her voice and her experiences on this council. But most importantly, Lilly is a wonderful and compassionate friend. She's someone you can talk to in times of need, and someone who champions and encourages the best versions of any person she meets, even if she doesn't agree with you. Lilly has and continues to be a beacon of light and a fierce voice in the fight to strengthen our democracy and improve our community. This is the kind of representation that we need to move our city forward to being the best it can be. So today, I'm here to strongly encourage you all to appoint Lilly Barron for the Ward 3 council seat. Thank you so much.
Thanks, Megan.
Natalie Handler, followed by Nicole Anna Gapsis.
Natalie Handler, for the record, I'm here today to show my unwavering support for Lilly Barron as my Ward 3 city council representative. I have known Lilly for close to a decade. My first introduction was having the pleasure of watching her sing jazz, which is just one of many amazing talents she graces our community with. We often would run into each other at local art events, and many times would chat about collaborating on projects we were working on. She has a lengthy resume in theater production and as an arts educator and organizer within our community. She now sits on the city's Art and Culture Commission. During these first years of getting to know Lilly, it was clear she was a force, always bringing a bounty of joy, passion, and what seemed like limitless energy to our time together that even to this day helps drive me forward in our more harrowing work. But it has been in the last few years that Lilly and I have become more than friends. We are family. We are bonded through the daily practice of community building. We do our best to support each other and those who are struggling to survive because we know we are much stronger together. We need a community that is fortified. Lilly aspires to not leave anyone behind through her work as a dedicated advocate for the unhoused. She not only sits on the board of Reno Initiative for Shelter and Equality, which operates our place, Women and Family Shelter, but has organized a community-funded motel program, bringing those living without shelter inside during the last December's winter storms, when the shelters were at capacity. The motel program not only kept people safe from freezing to death outside, but worked diligently with each individual in the program, from a single working mother with children to seniors, through the steps towards acquiring permanent housing and unfortunately experienced firsthand all the barriers and roadblocks each service presented along the way. Determined to do all we could with only a few successful outcomes was heartbreaking and took its toll due to the many personal sacrifices it required. But Lilly knew that walking each step alongside our neighbors was important to truly understanding the limitations on our community's services. She recognized that this firsthand information could help the public advocate for more effective systems to allocate resources more fruitfully and timely to actually support folks when they need it most. And so the work continues, and Lilly is a guiding arrow in the complexity of this intersectional work. She sits on the Sparks Police Advisory Committee, grows fresh food that feeds those who need it in her neighborhood, works as a policy director for ACLU, has joined in work with mass liberation in southern Nevada, and is currently working on three tremendously important bills she will bring to the next state legislature session. This work is her heart's work. She works alongside the people who are most impacted, and she holds a perspective and life experience that would be an incredible asset to our city government. Please give those who Lilly represents a seat at the table so we can all work together and leave no one behind. Thank you.
Thank you, Natalie.
Nicole Anna Gapsis, followed by Chaz Blackburn.
You almost got it. You're so close. You're right there. It's okay, I'll come back. You'll get it right one of these days. For the record, my name is Nicole Anna Gapsis, and I speak on behalf of an organization of the people. We're called Family Soup Mutual Aid. There's a handful of my friends here in the audience that all came to support and endorse our friend and ally in the struggle for human decency, Lilly Barron for Ward 3. This goes without saying, most people in this room are here to support Lilly, and that's for a reason, and I don't need to iterate what everybody else here has been saying. Lilly is clearly the right choice for this seat. Aside from the fact that Lilly is a highly qualified person on paper to represent perhaps the most economically and demographically diverse ward in the city, Lilly is one of the most adept and brilliant problem solvers that I have ever personally known. Lilly has been a supporter of not only our mutual aid projects, but I believe you would be hard-pressed to find anyone in the activist community who hasn't personally been inspired by her and the work that she has accomplished just as a citizen in this city. Ward 3 and Reno as a whole have benefited from Lilly's hard work and love for her community. She has personally cooked food for several of our distributions, which by the way serve almost 200 people a week, unsheltered residents here in this city, from food that she grew in her Hampton House Community Garden project. That is a feat that we never thought we would be able to accomplish, and the only reason we were able to do that was because of Lilly Barron, and I hold it as one of the greatest achievements that we maybe will ever reach as a mutual aid project here that started a year ago. Lilly is a leader of this community, and she does so with no financial incentive, she does so with no power-hungry motives and no reservations. She does so because she is not a politician, and that is essentially what we need here on council right now. Ultimately, I know that whether or not you decide to appoint my friend to this seat, she will continue her work to make the future of Reno what it should be, which is inclusive, attainable, sustainable, and better for everybody, not just the wealthy, not just the elite, not just the landowners and developers in this area. That being said, you would be making fools of yourselves and your constituents by choosing anyone else other than Lilly Barron. Now, I'm not a voter, and I do not believe that the system in America that we have right now is a democracy, and the fact that we are having an appointment is quite literally an example of why I believe that. The veil of democracy grows thinner each day and on every level of government. That being said, if I had a chance to vote for anybody right now, I would vote for Lilly Barron, and that is not because I believe in democracy, it's because I believe in Lilly Barron.
Thank you.
Chaz Blackburn, followed by Andrea Peltow.
Well, good afternoon. My name's Chaz Blackburn, for the record, and I just want to first say thank you for the opportunity, and what a tremendous turnout. It makes me proud as a young citizen in Reno to see people caring about the community, and I hope whoever you do pick is someone that's currently volunteering and giving back to this community. I was inspired to run. I've dedicated my life to serving this community. I've lived in Ward 3 for seven years at the same residence. I'm a renter and a parent, a proud dad of Lilly Blackburn, and she is going to be going to Vaughn Middle School next year. I live right off the VA, right off of Wells Avenue, and I feel like I've been preparing for this role for my whole life. I almost ran last election, but did not feel it was the right timing, and I've now gotten the blessing of all my boards to step back. My leadership style is to develop people to replace me and be able to do those responsibilities, and I'm at that point where I can just be an advisor. I'm confident I can hit the ground running and give 110%. I have the heart, the attitude, I'm adaptable to change. I really believe that everybody deserves to be valued and deserves to be respected and loved. As a chaplain, I'm professional in being competent at dealing with all different kinds of people of nationality, culture, different languages, sexual orientation, and I would bring the same dedication up to my role for the office of city councilman of serving all those around me and the entire community. My ask is that you grant me the honor of being a finalist so that I can elaborate and give specific answers on what I would accomplish in Ward 3. Big things such as revitalizing the Wells District and little things like the corner of Taylor and Locust, where I've personally seen or heard and witnessed 30 crashes, and we have disabled veterans walking with no stop sign. We need better community outreach to demographics like our Hispanic community. I currently was working with someone from Senator Jackie Rosen's office, Luis, to do some healthcare marketing, to be able to do some education on the resources out there. I represent seniors and veterans and the displaced population in Ward 3, look at housing long-term, and as we're running out of room and land, I think we have to get creative, and as we get denser with sustainable housing and energy, I did work in solar for a few years, and I believe it's worth the investment long-term. I hope to partner with our city manager and team to address issues and projects, boosting collaborative partnership and morale. We all have our differences, but all eyes are on the city council, and what happens in here trickles out into tsunamis in our community. And I really just want to be able to boast for public safety and for mental health for our first responders, and so I thank you for your consideration.
Thank you so much. Thank you so much.
Andrea Peltow, followed by Jake Conway.
Good morning, Mayor Shively and Reno City Council. So my name is Andrea Peltow, and I wanted to say number one, that I am the Chair of the Sparks Senior Advisory Committee. I have also just been chosen to be the Nevada Senior of the Year for 2021.
Ah, congratulations.
So, and I know I haven't appeared at many of your meetings because I spend most of my time at the Sparks meetings, but I did want to say that, you know, if anyone wishes to discuss senior issues, you know, I am always available to discuss senior issues with anyone. I am also here today to support my friend, Chaz Blackburn, who is running for your open Ward 3 seat. So I know a lot of it has been said today, you know, about the different places, different types of people in our community, but one type that I hadn't ever mentioned until Chaz spoke was seniors. And, you know, I was honored to meet Chaz several months ago, and he has since joined several of the senior boards in this community, and I can't say enough about, you know, his noshousness and his caring, you know, for seniors and everyone else in this community. So I really, you know, I'm not good at public speaking, even though I'm your Senior of the Year.
You're doing great. I think you're doing amazing. None of us like it, including me, and we do it for a living.
So, but I would just like to really request that you, you know, take a good look at Chaz's, you know, application, and, you know, I know he volunteers on at least 10 different committees in this community, and, you know... And, you know, he's always, he's always there, and he experiences, you know, day in and day out as his life under chaplain, you know, being with people at their last moments of life and, you know, hates to see, you know, people dying in their cars and, you know, I just, he's young, and he's ambitious, and he's thoughtful, and he's everything that you could possibly want in a Reno city council member. So thank you very much.
Thank you. Excellent job. You did fantastic.
Jake Conway, followed by Jake Maynard.
Good morning, Jake Conway, for the record. Today, I would like to begin by thanking the many qualified and deserving candidates that are looking for appointment in Ward Three. I truly appreciate you putting yourselves forward to help serve our community. I'm a business owner and in Ward Three, specifically in the Brewery District, and I'm here to voice my support for Kyle Edgerton. In the years that I have known Kyle, he has always been a person of the highest character and always very compassionate. I'm familiar with all of the work that Kyle has done helping immigration law in our city and then the various community service acts that he's done throughout his time here as well. I'm confident that Kyle will work tirelessly and cooperatively with all people that reside within Ward Three, as well as the businesses that work within Ward Three as well. And I'm confident that he will also work productively with all of the rest of the council. I'd also like to take a quick moment to voice support for the upcoming Let It Glow Festival and all of the work that Jamie has put in thus far. She's doing an awesome job. Businesses within the Brewery District are already getting ready and setting aside funds, but any additional funds that the city would be able to provide would be greatly appreciated and a wonderful investment for this event that's coming up. Thank you.
Jake Maynard, followed by Naezdi Badillo.
Hello. My name is Jake Maynard, and while I'm not currently a resident of Ward Three, I am a resident of the city of Reno. And I'm here to emphatically support the appointment of Lilly Baron for the Ward Three vacancy. I consider Lilly to be a great friend of mine, and in the entire time that I've known her, she has worked tirelessly for every single person in this city. And I mean every single person. She is incredibly smart, dedicated, compassionate, creative, and just an all-around cool person that people want to be around. There's literally no other person in the entire city that I would prefer over Lilly for this position. And she not only has the regular government qualifications, but has an incredibly positive and far-reaching impact on the community at large, in Ward Three especially, and beyond. As you all know, she runs a community garden with a food pantry that provides free food to anyone in need, no questions asked. She's been involved in countless mutual aid projects, protests, art projects, and conversations, all aimed at positively changing this community for the better. Her skills in organizing and teaching have had an incredible impact on myself and many others, many of whom are here today. She's brought many of us hope, hope for a better future for every single person in this city, something that I have not felt from any local government or otherwise in, as far as I can remember. And all of that can, I can't think of anything more qualifying than all of that. Lilly has inspired me and my own community engagement efforts and has shown what joy and positivity can occur when you bring people together. I know that if Lilly is appointed, that she will have my best interest in mind, along with all the people in this city that have often been overlooked. This appointment is an opportunity for all of you to include someone who has worked tirelessly for her community and can provide an extremely important point of view for many who, like I said, have been overlooked. In my opinion, the appointment of Lilly is an absolute no-brainer and will result in a shockwave of positive change all over our community. Thank you.
Thank you, Jake.
Naezdi Badillo, followed by William Mantle.
Good morning. My name is Naezdi Badillo, and I'm here to show support for Miguel Martinez for Ward Three. I am a resident of Ward Three, and he's a dedicated father with good family values. He has dedicated his entire profession to help the youth. You usually think about the current problems, what's going on in this city, but if you really think about it, the future is with the young. He has worked endlessly to help the youth go to college, to help him with life skills as well as soft skills. You would find him teaching youngsters about how to tie a tie, how to interview, and of course, how to actually budget and work on their finances. He just doesn't help them go to college. He also expresses the importance of trade. He wants them to have a skill as well as a profession. You usually find him talking to parents and encouraging them to have a better relationship with their kids, because if you have a strong household, then you would have a better community. You would have people with better jobs. You would have people with better healthcare. Why? Because they are educated. They understand the importance of giving back to the community. As well as inspiring many youngsters to go to college or pursue a vocational education, he also inspires them to go and serve their community. Cleaning parks, also helping other youngsters in different schools to serve as mentors. Miguel Martinez is a great representative, and he is representing the people that are not here. Why are they not here? Because they have to work. If they don't work, their family don't eat. And of course, the youngsters, where are they? They are in school. Thank you and have a great day.
Thank you so much.
Will Mantle, followed by Dwight George.
Good morning, Mayor, Council. William Mantle, for the record. I'm running for appointment of Ward Three's seat, as you well know, and I'd like to say thank you all for giving me the time to meet with you and converse, to have the opportunity to put myself out there, to seek your endorsement and your support in this call to action in service of our city. And that is frankly what I seek to do, what I've been trying to do all these years, since basically growing up in Reno. I was raised in Eureka, Nevada, if you're familiar with it, just on Highway 50, about 500 people right now. And growing up there, being raised there, I learned what community is. There's a true interdependency that thrives in small towns and gives them a resilience that can't be found in many other places and creates a unity that is truly special and beautiful. And that is the kind of thing that I would love to really foster in Reno, bring those sentiments, that culture, and that togetherness to that seat and to that position. I do think that I could be an amazing representative for the city by getting out there, speaking to every single person possible and hearing them out as an advocate, as I have been as a sexual assault victims, sexual assault victims advocate, and as an advocate for our people right now as a family support specialist. I've been a civil servant for many years, worked for the government collectively, 14 years in one way or another, state, county, and otherwise. And I think that you have a really hard decision, and this is an amazing field of candidates with a tremendous amount of passion and thrust and desire to serve this community. That is so clear. For the record, I did just have a background check with Washoe County Sheriff's Office, and that went well, everybody, so I got that going for me. And further, I did not ask for the public that I know to come up and comment, to write in, because I have been out there with the public already. I have sought to give to of myself as much as possible to seek their votes in elections back in 18 and 22, and I think I've shown who I am at face and at service to the community as much as I possibly could. I want to say thank you to Washoe County for the years that it's invested in me to become a better civil servant and given me the opportunity to be a part of the Washoe County Employees Association Board of Directors, who, it's a family. And we fight as families, do and must, but ultimately, I think we always find a way forward to do great for our membership and our people. And I would truly appreciate your support and consideration today, but regardless, I know that you'll pick someone who is going to do a damn fine job with Ward Three. Thank you.
Thanks, William.
Dwight George, followed by Ruby Barantos.
So for the record, I was not asked to be here. I am here because I want to, because my name is Dwight George. I'm a resident of Ward Three, and I'm here to state my support for Lilly Baron, representing it. The first time I met Lilly, she was fighting for equal rights and protection for everyone that calls this city home, and I've never seen her stop since. Whether it is, as stated before, making sure all its residents are safe or fed or have a place to live, there's no other candidate I've actually seen physically do more to actually show up for their community. From the community garden she built from the ground up to the multiple distributions she's done to care for the basic needs of a growing number of unsheltered population, to the actual work of then finding somewhere for them to live, even if it was coming out of her own pocket. Food, water, and shelter are basic fundamental human rights, and I've seen every one of those provided by Lilly to those that needed the most. I believe that the best of us care for those that have it the worst, and Lilly is someone who has done this time and time again. Another important aspect of representing the people is to push back against those that truly don't have its best interests in mind, and as we have all seen here before, that has been no problem for her. Good conflict encourages good change, good growth, better living for all, and Lilly has proven herself time and time again to be a great fighter for it. I am honestly honored and feel very lucky to be able to call Lilly a fellow partner, community member, and friend. And just like all the great, caring, and hard-working people here that call this place home have and will speak up for her, I know the council will be just as lucky. For too long, diversity has been seen as erasure rather than what it is inclusion, and I believe for too long, the city has not had enough of it. I'd like to remind the city council that the city is not its buildings, but its people, all of its people. And if this is truly a council for the people, then listen to all those here and look at the many that she has already helped. If you do, I believe you have no reason to not support her.
Thanks, Dwight.
Ruby Barantos, followed by Jack's Heart.
I'm here to endorse Lilly for Ward Three.
Ruby, can you state your name for the record, please?
Oh, Ruby Barantos. Lilly is doing the work in our community. She shows up. When I do community work, such as clean the river with the Indigenous Lead River Justice Group, or volunteer with mutual aid groups in the community, I see Lilly. But I've never seen anyone who currently serves on the council show up in the ways that Lilly does. Her words align with her actions. As you've heard from so many others, she is the voice of the community. And lastly, as a person of color, it is imperative to see people of color serve on the council. Representation matters. We need voices such as Lilly's that represent the diversity that exists within our city. And, yeah, all power to the people. Thank you.
Jack's Heart, followed by Tara Tran.
Hi, my name is Jack's Heart, for the record. I'm a resident of Ward Three. I live on East Six, near Valley. I live 60 seconds from Hampton House and where Lilly lives. I unequivocally support the appointment of Lilly Baron for the Ward Three vacancy. It's a gift to have had the chance to work with and get to know Lilly and her son and see the passion and care that Lilly has for her community. Lilly is already doing the work that a city council member should be doing, and I have a deep trust and respect for Lilly, and I know that that sentiment is shared widely in our neighborhood. She stands up for the people and voices that are so often overlooked by city and state officials, and for me, it really just comes down to the fact that she regularly shows up for her community.
Tara Tran, followed by Tyler DeWitt.
Hello. Good to see everybody except for the people that aren't here. I just want to say that...
Please state your name for the record.
Oh, I'm Tara Tran. I live on Sixth Street. I'm Jack's roommate. I've lived on East Sixth Street for almost seven years now, and I love it there. I love, like, my community. I love the people who walk by. I love seeing people walk by and talking to them. I love being in a place where if someone knows that if they need something, that they can come to us and ask, and we can help them. I love being a community where people work together and trust each other. And Lilly, more than anybody or as much as anybody, has been a part of creating a community like that. I think that if you love a place, it's important to have the courage to examine its failures, examine what it actually needs and where it's gone wrong. I think that if you act blindly to the things that you can improve, that's not love, that's not care. I hear a lot of talk about growing bigger and growing taller, expansion, development, but without a strong foundation, that will crumble, that will fall. That foundation is the people of Reno, and it includes the people that you have failed. The people that you have failed are not an obstacle to your growth. They are an integral part of it. And, yeah, and the people that you, that have the privilege of having money to spend are not something to be reaped from. They're not an opportunity to take from. They are also your responsibility. They, when you talk about growth, it needs to be about bringing everybody up together. And I think that Lilly does that and knows that, and that's why I'm endorsing her for city council. You guys have the opportunity to gain the trust of your constituents, gain the trust of your communities, which you guys should be very grateful for, considering how many times they have been failed and how many times that trust has been breached. So take that opportunity, be grateful for it, and prove to us that you care. Thank you. I would also like to endorse Cynthia Meringney Jr. for his Civil Service Commission. He's a great guy and led a reading group that taught me a lot of ideas and is, yeah, he's great.
Tyler DeWitt, followed by Sean Savoy. All right. Sean Savoy, followed by Melissa Gilbert.
Good morning. Sean Savoy, for the record. Looks like the mayor has stepped out a moment. I was gonna join everyone else in her greeting, but I did not want to traumatize her further, so it's good that she's not here. First, I want to say thank you for the opportunity to enter my name to represent Ward Three, where I live in downtown, where I am employed, where I have a business, where I shop and where I exercise, and also where I was born. It so happens at the hospital where I now work in spiritual care, whole care, employee wellness, diversity, equity, and inclusion, and health equity. Talk about coming full circle over the last 50 years. Second, I'd like to thank Oscar Delgado for his years of service to Ward Three. 10 years of service, I had the pleasure of working with Oscar on the Latino Research Center Advisory Board for some years, and I applaud him for representing the diversity and cultural richness of Ward Three. Third, I'd like to thank the council for your hard work in moving our city into the new era. COVID, political divisiveness, and other difficult issues and... COVID, political divisiveness, and other difficult issues and challenges notwithstanding. Many of you know that I've been committed to collaboration and community in my personal and professional lives to help achieve common goals, which most of you know I'm capable of, as demonstrated with the project to create the first Human Rights Commission for the city of Reno. And like my friend Geralda, I must also say adieu. I am now completing five years in my capacity on that commission, five years of service, and actually a total of seven on the project. Fourthly, my thanks to the mayor for championing the RHRC and to the entire council, Oscar included, for unanimously approving the council, commission, I should say. Today is known as the Day of the Races in Latin America. And as a half-Latin American, I would like to share this is a celebration of the mixed heritage of our communities. As a person of mixed heritage, I'm enthusiastic at the opportunity to be the representative of the constituents of our ward, one rich in culture and history. As with any nonprofit, community, or government enterprise, which I've been involved in over many years, I'm committed to help build an ecosystem of responsibility, accountability, and compassion. If selected, I will continue to be committed to working to make the good better and the better the best. Lastly, I'd like to acknowledge all my fellow applicants, and I wish them luck on this journey. And in closing, I simply want to say again, gracias por esta oportunidad. Estoy muy orgulloso y agradecido, which simply means, thank you for this opportunity. I'm very proud and grateful. Thank you.
Melissa Gilbert, followed by Alisa Christman.
Hello. For the record, I'm Melissa Gilbert. I am the co-founder of Reno Garlic Fest, and I work for Reno Food Systems, and I'm very concerned about the resiliency of our community in more ways than one. I come from a political family, and I know the number of hours that you spend here listening to people with kindness and compassion and the complication of doing this process. I imagine all of you would love it if we could just put it to a vote. It's a lot of money. My understanding is it's a lot of money to replace, just to have an election. So I wasn't really asked to be here, but I felt so strongly that we have a candidate who is equally, like, respected by the Sparks Chief of Police and the anarchists who are in the audience. And I just urge you to consider, consider the benefit that she would bring. Lilly might not be the easiest choice, but she's definitely the best choice. And I hope you'd make a bold move and really bring all of us who are deeply devoted to bringing, to helping make Reno a community where everybody has something to eat and a place to sleep. That is our effort, and I really hope that you all join me in supporting Lilly. Thank you.
Hey, wait, wait. One thing I need to know.
Yes.
When is the Garlic Fest?
Oh, you missed it, darling. It's the twenty-ninth. It was the twenty-ninth. We had almost six thousand people. It was a great success. We'll make sure you get a personal invitation next time.
Massive believer in garlic.
Yeah, we moved it to Dick Taylor. It does, and it brings everyone together, and it's an easy crop to grow in northern Nevada, so, garlic.
Reach out. Love to support it.
Thank you.
However, we can support you and get more people to get involved.
All right, thank you, Mayor.
Good job. Thank you so much. Good job.
Melissa, Melissa, sorry, I can't let you get away. Thanks so much for Moon Rabbit Cafe the other night. It was really beautiful. If you haven't been, you know, check it out. It's held at the Reno Buddhist Temple. I think it's every other month, and just a beautiful evening. I know that Reno Food Systems helps provide the food, probably Hampton House Garden Project too. But to you, I just say thank you because it was a really cool night.
It is.
And I think, thank you for inviting me, and I hope that other people would be encouraged to go. Really special.
All right, thank you and thanks for coming. Yeah, well, I helped out. I made the coleslaw and the vegan cake. It's a pay-as-you-can cafe. Yeah, you know, kale, bring kale back. I want to do Kale Fest one of these days. All right. Well, thank you for your time. I appreciate it.
Great job.
Alisa Christman, followed by Erica Minnaberry.
Hi, my name is Alicia Christman. I'm a Reno resident, a mother. I'm an artist and business owner here. I also work as the Education Director for The Generator, a nonprofit community arts organization. I mention this because I know a lot of members of the council are familiarly, somewhat familiar with the work we do in the community, and also because this work as an arts educator has given me the opportunity to support and interface with a wide range of community members, mostly children and their families, many of whom who are experiencing houselessness and other forms of financial and other insecurities rendering them more vulnerable. And I'm here today to endorse Lilly Baron for the Ward Three appointment. I am deeply inspired and impressed by her unrelenting commitment to our community and her work ethic, her efficacy as a community leader, and maybe more, most importantly, given what we're discussing here, her vision for the potential of the city of Reno. I can't imagine a better choice for this seat. I think you have a real opportunity here by appointing her, and I really hope you take it. Thanks for your time.
Thanks so much.
Erica Minnaberry, followed by Carlos Elizondo.
Hello, my name is Erica Minnaberry, for the record. I am here to endorse Lilly, of course. I think her mutual aid efforts and community service speaks for itself, so I am here to tell a little story. In 2019, there was a young person of color that came to the activist community and said that there is a swastika on somebody's fence in her neighborhood, and it made her scared to exist in her neighborhood. So of course, the activist community, being very much anti-Nazi, were discussing all of the different ways that we could go about dealing with the swastika situation. And of course, with all of the solutions that were presented, there was just lists and lists of things that can go wrong when dealing with a possible Nazi. So while that conversation was happening, Lilly called me and said, you know what? Let's just go over and knock on this person's door and see what's up. So we go over there. Sure enough, we see the swastika on the fence. We knock on this person's door. The person answers. We were like, hey, you know, there's a swastika on your fence. What's up with that? And he's like, oh, I was just putting reflective tape up because people keep hitting my fence, and I didn't see the design of it from that close. And so we got more reflective tape. We put it up around, so the swastika is no longer there. We go back. We go into our chat with all of the activists, and they're still talking about what can be done with the swastika. So Lilly was able to say, it's not a problem anymore. It's taken care of. That's what Lilly brings to the table. She brings action. In a world where most groups and especially most governmental bodies discuss the reason why things won't work and what can't be done, Lilly thinks about the way things can be done. And that's the biggest difference, although it does challenge the status quo, and that can be scary. But I'm here to tell you that people are unsubscribing from the status quo every day in droves. Every time someone gets evicted, every time someone has to put their kids to bed hungry, every time someone freezes to death because they're sleeping outside, they unsubscribe from that status quo. And Lilly is there feeding them and keeping them warm. So for all of these reasons, you should vote for Lilly. But the biggest reason for your guys' concern is that in 2024, Lilly is gonna win whether or not she's the incumbent or running against the incumbent. And she's gonna do that because she gives voters something to vote for and not just someone to vote against. Thank you.
Thank you.
Carlos Elizondo, followed by Adrian Lowry.
Good morning. My name is Carlos Elizondo. I told the city bus, you know, it's back running normal. They still, they having issues, you know, because they have a lot of misrats. I talked to a person that oversees that, and he said they had a few bus drivers that call in city. He was gonna have a meeting with them that day. So even if it's still back running, they still having, you know, serious issues, you know, because there's a lot of misrats. I had to wait a long, long time for, not only me, but all the people, all the people too. And the other thing is, I forgot to mention, the first time I was here, from Lakeside Drive all the way down on Brimby to Lynn Berry, and then right on Lynn Berry to Isbell to Becker Lane, there's always cars abandoned with no license plates and license plates expires. Thank you. That's it for me.
Adrian Lowry, followed by Jess Trujillo.
Hello, my name is Adrian Lowry. I'm here to speak on the appointment to City Council Ward Three. There are some good candidates. I'm always excited to see my friend Adrian Feimster making waves. But I'm here to speak in support of Lilly Baron on perhaps two things. A lot of people have already come up to talk about her qualifications and many, many different aspects of her, of her contributions to this community. And I want to talk about two things, culture and how she is on a board. You know, I think as a city that is very focused on developing culture for Reno, it's important that we do not just look at these cookie cutter sort of solutions to producing culture that, you know, any mid-sized city could put in place to look at. We need to look at the historically grounded, the, you know, historically Reno culture that can only belong to the city of Reno. And Lilly has contributed so much in that aspect, both, you know, both in her personal artistic pursuits as well as, you know, finding ways to connect the art of Reno to the history of Reno and preserve the culture that we do have that is often sort of papered over or forgotten. And then in terms of how I've seen her on different boards, I've been on many boards and committees, usually as a secretary. I'm a serial secretary. And I see a lot of, a lot of dysfunction usually on a lot of boards. I mean, you know, some are better, some are worse. But there are some people who come to a board and they come with solutions. They come informed. They do not, you know, it's not about ego. It's about finding solutions, moving forward, carrying it through, and that just describes Lilly to a T. She is an incredible executive force on a board. And then also, just as another thing, I would like to also endorse Theo Marigny to the Civil Service Committee.
Civil Service.
Is that the right term?
Okay.
Thank you.
All right. Thank you so much, Adrian. Good job.
Jess Trujillo, followed by Susie Ramirez.
Hi, I'm Jess Trujillo, for the record. I am here normally, I've given up a lot of hope on democracy and the government and all of that in general. But I am here to support and endorse Lilly Baron. She is somebody that I am constantly inspired and motivated by and somebody that I deeply look up to. And I cannot think of someone that is a better fit, that would help bridge community as well. Like, just from my point of view and being a person of color, I don't feel comfortable in a group of white people. Like, I would love to see representation about someone that actually does the work, that is out there all the time as a mother, as well on top of all things. I get exhausted, and I get tired, and get overwhelmed easily, and I feel heavily about just all these issues constantly being thrown. But then I look to Lilly, and she's always out there. She's coming up with solutions. She is doing the fucking work. I'm sorry for my language, but I, I would love to see her. She deserves it more than anybody else. And that's all I have to say.
All right, thank you. I'm getting your DMs on Instagram, too.
My DMs?
Yeah.
What DMs?
I think you've DM'd me a couple times on Instagram.
I don't think I would DM you.
Okay.
I don't.
All right.
I think you send me messages. I'm getting them.
Susie Ramirez.
Thank you.
I am not DMing you.
Okay. Well, you are.
Good evening. For the record, Susie Ramirez. First, I'd like to acknowledge the three nations, the land that we stand on. And I am here to support Lilly Baron for Ward Three. It's, I could say a lot of things about Lilly and why I support them and the work that they do in this community. I grew up here. I grew up in the community that she is currently in. And, you know, thinking about why I was coming here to give a comment on why I support her, I was thinking about my childhood and how I thought I wish that someone like Lilly was there for me when I was a kid. And I guess that's why I'm here, is because they are someone's parent in the community. They're not just, you know, a community member. They're someone's parent, someone's sibling, someone's, you know, neighbor, friend. They are so compassionate that I can't imagine anybody else in that position where they can take care of this community. I just also want to remind you all that, you know, you are here to serve us as community. And, you know, I think this would be a great opportunity for all of you to, you know, really learn from her and also, you know, have a real change in our community, like the things that she's been transforming in the last few years, you know. Yeah, I, I can't imagine anybody else that would be adequate for this position. I really encourage each and every one of you to take her position seriously. And I just want to say that, you know, from, you know, growing food, literally putting her hands in the dirt to grow food for people, to finding solutions for housing for people that, you know, like, we've seen throughout the pandemic, there's so many people that don't have current housing now. She's actually trying to do something about it. And, you know, I feel really privileged to be able to be so close to someone like her and, you know, actually be able to talk to her and say, hey, like, you know, I would really like this in the community, or, hey, how can we, you know, change this? And I haven't gone to get to know any of you like that, you know. So I feel like it would be a great support for us, like, to be able to go to her, to maybe reach all of you as well. So, yeah, I would just like to, you know, support her and also, you know, ask every one of you to really consider her. Thank you.
All right. Thanks, Susie.
Madam Mayor, that's our final public comment in the audience. Okay, so Michael Trudell.
Can I, I, because I want to make sure, because I know everyone's got a busy schedule. We have a busy agenda. G1 is not until sort of the middle. We are also going to take a break. We are down two council people. So it makes it really hard for all of us to sort of get up. So we're gonna have to take a break altogether. So what I would, I would ask Madam Clerk, or just actually tell the audience, if you are here for item G1, this might be a good time to do it, because otherwise you're gonna be waiting quite a bit to get to G1. So that's all I can say. If, like, you have a busy day and you don't want to stay in, you know, a very long council meeting. So I just want to remind everyone, so that's what a lot of people don't realize, is that this will take a long time to get to.
The only commenters we have remaining are the actual applicants. And so they have, many of them have opted to wait and comment on G1 specifically, but the commenters that are in the audience are usually the participants.
Yeah, okay.
Mike Trudell.
Little secret, you can do both.
Madam Mayor, Vice Mayor, members, members of the City Council. I had planned a speech and I wanted to withdraw my application uh, for this position. Basically, um, I've heard so much good stuff about different uh, applicants that my, my desire to uh, serve was simply to allow the city to make a temporary appointment to fill the position. And I don't think that that's necessary now because you have plenty of qualified applicants. So I withdraw my application. I appreciate the opportunity though, to come before you and I will continue to volunteer.
Oh, thanks, thanks, Mike. I, I was lucky enough to run with you at one time and just enjoyed your positive personality and all the things that you've done in Reno. You've been an incredible servant. Thank you so much. That was very kind. Thank you. See, this is the kind of person Mike is. Wonderful.
Courtney McKimmy.
Thank you, Madam Clerk, for letting me move uh, to public comment so we can uh, move along the today's agenda. Madam Mayor, Councilmember, City Manager Thornley. For the record, my name is Courtney McKimmy and thank you for the opportunity to be here this morning. When I moved to Reno eight years ago to attend college, I would have never expected to see my name on a list before the council for possible appointment to serve on this body. In all honesty, when I moved to Reno, I wasn't quite sure what I would end up doing here outside of going to class and writing papers. But I'm, but in those short eight years, I'm very proud of what I've been able to accomplish with the backing and support of our community. From earning my undergraduate and graduate degrees, to working with our small business owners to grow their operations and to starting a food delivery program for our most vulnerable residents during the height of a global pandemic. I've found Reno is a place where you will always find someone willing to offer a helping hand and it's a place I proudly call home. I think my public policy experience at the state and local levels across Nevada has given me the skills to identify a problem, evaluate solutions and bring broad coalitions together to get things done. I believe I'm well prepared to continue the progress the city has made and address the tough issues facing our residents to ensure Ward Three in Reno is a place where everyone can thrive. As a young queer woman in this co- uh, in this community, a member of the Nevada Army National Guard, a former member of the Reno Access Advisory Committee, I would be honored to continue my track record of public service on behalf of Nevadans as a member of the City Council. So thank you for your time and thank you for your consideration today.
All right, thank you so much.
All right, Madam Mayor, with that, we have two participants via Zoom who would like to speak. So our first commenter today is Edward Coleman, followed by Mary Edwards. Mr. Coleman, if you would unmute, state your name for the record and begin speaking. Edward, you're still muted?
Technology. Hi, my name's Edward Coleman and I do not live in Ward Three, but I believe that there is a person running for the Ward Three position that has inspired so many people in this city that you all would be making a terrible mistake if you didn't consider her fully for this position. And I'm speaking of Lilly Baron. She's clearly qualified. As most of you, most people on the current City Council know, she has worked with you all on a range of issues and helped shape certain initiatives over time. She's even been a dedicated advocate for the homeless and unhoused community here amongst all the other work that she does, just being Lilly. I'm endorsing her not only because she's my friend and someone I've been honored to see work up close and personal, but also because people don't elect a, a list of qualifications. They elect someone that they know and can relate to. And Lilly is very relatable. I've worked, watched her walk tirelessly with people who may not have always seen her as an equal. She's put that slight aside and focused on the greater good for whoever she was championing or whatever cause she supported and always pressed forward relentlessly and with humor. One of the hallmarks of a leader is their ability to keep the end game in mind and order the intervening challenges and opportunities to lead to their desired outcome. Lilly Baron has this ability and Ward Three needs her guidance. I've seen Lilly build coalitions of people and focus them on a purpose. Her heart is one of an organizer. Lilly understands that true power comes from the people and she acts and moves in this manner, often bringing a range of people along with her as you've seen today just from the comments alone. From organizing Black Lives Matter protests to fighting for Makai Lee and disadvantaged communities, Lilly Baron has stood at the front of coalitions and helped shape them. She also is not afraid to stand when others cannot and continue to advocate as a lone voice. But she knows and understands she's channeling the collective voice and will of the coalition she has assembled. Lilly Baron knows how to work with people and always places the good of the people first. It's hard to sometimes see the true nature of such a figure as Lilly Baron. As someone privileged to be around her in many situations, I assure you she is human and faces frustrations. But she deals with these in such a way that ultimately strengthens her to continue forward. She deals with them in this way because it is her nature to build and advocate for a community that heals itself and takes care of all of its members. Lilly Baron cares deeply for this community and has often shared her strength and goodwill with it despite the toll it may take on her. A leader willing to sacrifice themselves in their time is not to be disregarded lightly. Lilly Baron is this person. I support Lilly Baron for Ward Three because she is a caring human being that wants to see everyone else become better people. Please, please consider her candidacy, um, because as it's been mentioned before, I hope she continues and presses forward should she not be elected and run for the seat in 2024. Thank you.
Thank you, Edward. Nice to see you.
Mary Edwards.
I'm a fan.
All right, and Madam Mayor, with that, we have no additional public comment at this time. For the record, I just would like to note that we did receive four comments which were general in nature and received prior to 4:00 PM yesterday, October 11th. These comments were written correspondence received via our Reno.gov online public comment portal or by email to our office. Copies of these have been distributed to the Reno City Council and are available to the public on Reno.gov. One comment in favor of a various item and three letters of concern in various items. Additionally, we did have three, I'm sorry, four voicemails. Those also have been transcribed and are a part of the permanent record and today we're gonna look to move forward onto item A four, approval of the agenda.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. Before we do that, I just want to uh, clear up a couple notes and I might make a quick public comment. First of all, I'm gonna hand it to our City Manager, Mr. Doug Thornley for any corrections or uh, updates to the agenda.
I think the only update to the agenda is that um, there are other birthdays that deserve celebrating as well.
No, 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 no. You spoke too soon.
Oh, all right. Cause it wasn't written down.
I'm waiting, I'm waiting on something.
Oh, okay, well there's.
Now you just blew it.
I don't know what to tell you.
Is there any, anything on the agenda you want to change, move around?
There is nothing on the actual agenda that needs to be moved around.
So I feel very fortunate. I, I don't like celebrating my birthday. It's a really weird thing. Um, I'm actually, I, I look at it as my mom. It's really like, I should, I should celebrate her, right? But they're one of my most favorite people here at City Hall. I did not know we share a birthday. So that's a true gift, my friend. So everyone, we're gonna sing happy birthday to AJ. Happy birthday to you. Happy birthday to you. Happy birthday, dear nation. Happy birthday to you. Okay. All right, Madam Clerk.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. So we're on item A four, approval of the agenda.
Move to approve.
All right, I have a motion and a second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, motion carries unanimously. Madam Clerk, sending it back to you.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. We're now moving on to item A five, A five one, which is the approval of the August 10th Reno City Council minutes.
All right, thank you. At this time, I'd like to get a motion.
Second.
I have a motion, I have a second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, motion carries. Madam Clerk.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. We're going on to our B items, which are consent items and just to note for the body, we do have one public commenter in the audience for our B, B items before we make a motion.
Okay, thank you so much. I'm gonna send it right back to you for public comment.
All right, Tom Dunn, Reno Firefighters Association. Just kidding, he does not want to make public comment. So we are looking for items to be pulled.
What, what number were you in support of?
B eight and B nine.
B eight and B nine? Okay, thank you so much. Okay, at this time, I'm gonna ask councilmembers, are there any items you would like to pull off consent agenda? I'm gonna start with you, Councilwoman Taylor. No, all right. Uh, Vice Mayor Reese. Councilwoman Doerr.
I had a quick question about B six, double R Boulevard.
Okay, so we'll pull that.
Pull that.
Councilwoman Weber. All right, thank you so much. At this time, I'd like to ask to approve all the other agenda items on the consent. I have a motion, I have a second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, motion carries unanimously. I'm gonna send it right to you, Councilwoman Doerr with item B six.
Just a quick question and maybe our staff is here.
Hans is here, Mr. Meyer is here.
Could you just introduce yourself and just ex- explain um, what we're doing here?
Yeah, absolutely. Uh, Hans Meyer, Senior Civil Engineer with Public Works. Basically before you today is an item for the, that is probably just a routine item listed within our, in NRS to reapportion an assessment district that was created about, I believe in 2002.
Right. So what does it mean though to reapportion? That was my main question.
Yeah, so basically it's a bookkeeping item where a property owner within this district combined parcels. And in order to continue invoicing that assessment, uh, this action notes the change and the change in assessment on that parcel.
So every time any parcel changes like this, you would have to bring an item back to council?
Yes, there is options within the NRS for the Finance Director to have that, uh, but it would need an ordinance to create.
Well, just thinking, it might be a good idea. Just, you know, it seems like such a simple bookkeeping thing to.
It is a simple bookkeeping uh, issue and it is an item where there is considerable confusion every time we put one on the agenda. So we can, we can look at that. We can work up what an ordinance giving uh, Ms. Van Buren.
Or what we could delegate to staff related to this particular kind of activity?
Of course.
Okay.
I believe with this one, um, it does end in 2023. Um, and a lot of the ones that do typically have reapportionments are coming to a close within the next two to three years.
So would they all have to come back? Is that what you're saying?
If they change, if parcels within those properties change. So typically it's been probably the Somerset Special Assessment District, this double R one, um, and this one ends September 1, 2023. So.
So it has to be like renewed or something?
Uh, no, it'll come to a close. Basically, uh, all the invoices.
Oh, the, it will be over. The SAD will be over?
Yes.
Okay, we'll be done with it. Okay, gotcha. Thank you. Well, with that, Madam Mayor, I'd move to approve.
All right, thank you so much. I have a motion from Councilwoman Doerr, a second from Vice Mayor uh, Reese. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, motion carries. All right, thank you. Back at you, Madam Clerk.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. With that, we're gonna move on to item C one, which is our first public hearing of the day.
All right. So much. At this time, Madam Clerk, um, I am now going to open the record for the public hearing. Was proper notice given? Any correspondence received?
Madam Mayor, proper notice was given, no correspondence was received on this item. Additionally, we have no live public comment registered at this time.
Okay, thank you so much. At this time, I believe I'm gonna send it right back to our City Attorney Carl Hall.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Ordinance introduction, bill number 7218, case number LDC 22 dash 00048, DP two, master plan zoning map amendment, ordinance to men, title eighteen, chapter eighteen point zero two of the Reno Municipal Code entitled Zoning Rezoning, a plus or minus eight point zero five acre site located plus or minus a thousand feet south of the intersection of Claim Jumper Way and Tellurian Mine Drive, from unincorporated transition, five acres UT five to single family, eight dwellings per acre, SF eight, together with matters which pertain to or are necessarily connected therewith, Ward two.
All right, thank you so much. Okay, this time I, I assume, uh, Brooke, you're gonna come on up and give us a little background on this and uh, give us a great presentation. Thank you so much.
Good morning, uh, City Councilor, good afternoon. Brooke Oswald, Associate Planner for the Record. I have a quick presentation. You have seen this item before and we had some modifications to that, so I'll go over that and that history and, and uh, move through that in a presentation really quickly. So it is roughly, it's an eight acre site. Uh, what we're, what we, we did a master plan and zoning map. That master plan has been approved by the City Council. It's currently going to our Chucky Meadows Regional Planning Agency. That's anticipated that that will be heard uh, October 26th at that agency. Today, we're gonna be talking about that zoning map amendment and, and it should be noted too that we have an associated tentative map, conditional use permit, minor deviation. Those were approved by our planning commission. Were not appealed and those are also contingent upon all of these approvals going through and finally getting to, through our regional. Uh, the area was annexed in, in 2007, associated with some of that Palisades development close by. Just for the project site, this is the Demani Ranch High School in the circle there. We do see that top rectangle. That is what, uh, a project has been before you before. That's the Canyon's Planned Unit Development. More recently, we saw the, the, to the east of that, additional eighty acres. That's that Canyon Edge uh, project. And then a little closer in on the site, uh, we can see the terminus of uh, the roadway there, utilities and that preparation for access to those surrounding sites. We are seeing, this is the water tank, Tamal Water Tank that we see on the hill there. And then I think something very identical is the large D in close proximity to this site. So quickly go through our timeline and process. Uh, this uh, previously went to the planning commission and they did a recommendation of that zoning map and minor plan amendment. That we did this in August 3rd before it came to you and those other approvals that I see. At that time, we were looking at that UT forty to the SF eight. We're now looking at a UT five and I can go over why, why that came through. Did go to City Council. Yeah, the City Council did approve uh, both that master plan amendment and zoning map amendment in a six to one favor. We did have a record, record discrepancy that was brought forward at that time that uh, was not reflected in our records. We went back and checked our records, have updated our records and that zoning has changed. So that zoning on that property went through unincorporated transition, uh, five acres required for one unit to the single family, eight units per acre. We, we ran this through, all the way back through, through our planning commission and then back up because we wanted to have transparency and we wanted to be clear on our records and make sure we have a solid record and a solid record for, for the public. We are fast-tracking this, so we did hear this last week at Planning Commission. We'll hear this uh, today and then if this does move on to a second reading, we'll be hearing that on the 26th. Uh, there is no substantial change in that analysis. Really, those two zonings, uh, when we look at the zoning, what's allowed and everything actually comes out to be exactly the same, just how it worked out. So there's no, no substantial difference between those zonings other than name.
This is, seems to be the crux of the issue. Um, could you just say it one more time? So when we first considered it, it was UT forty, that's what the staff believed.
Yes.
To, and the transition was to SF eight.
Correct.
But now you realize that UT forty was incorrect and it should have been UT five.
Correct. There was an ordinance change that happened, wasn't reflected in our records. It did go back, the records was brought forward. We did verify that um, and have updated that and yes, it is UT five.
And UT five is more dense than UT.
Uh, UT five, so what that, it, it would be, they have eight acres, so
Okay.
What it allows would allow for that one unit on that eight acres.
Regardless.
Even under that UT forty, it would allow for that one unit because it would be non-conforming. It's eight acres, not forty, but they're still allowed to build. So it, it allows the same developability, so we're not seeing any difference within that.
So it isn't even that UT five allowed, it would have allowed, if like you had a forty acre parcel, UT five would have allowed eight, I guess, fi- uh.
No, UT five, because of eight acre parcel, they need five acres for one parcel. So they would get one five, they only have three, so they only get one, one parcel.
But I just said if they had had forty.
Yes.
Then they, if they had forty.
Correct.
One on, in one case it would be one and in the other case it would be eight.
It would be eight, yes.
And so, but since they only have eight.
Yep.
It still would be one. It still would be one regardless. Okay, I just think it's really important to get that clarified.
No, I agree with you. Thank you for bringing that up.
Move to approve staff recommendation.
Okay, well, wait a minute.
Hold on, hold on, hold on. Hold on, hold on. Okay. Hold on one second. I do want to bring something up. I want to let everyone know in chambers, we are going to be taking a break right after this item. So we are going to break for lunch, Madam Clerk, for 45 minutes. Okay? All right, I just wanted to respect everyone's time in case they want to go take a break and go to lunch. Okay.
Were you finished, Brooke?
Yeah, I mean, it's basically, we went to Planning Commission. I think the other important thing is they did recommend approval of this zoning map.
All right, thank you so much. So I'm going to, hold on one second.
Okay.
Hold on, before we even go to any motion, I'd like to ask, any public comment? No, seeing that there is none. Any discussion from the body, starting with Councilwoman Taylor? No? Okay, thank you. All right.
I asked my question.
Back to you, go ahead.
Okay, I'm just like to make a motion. I did last time and am again.
All right, I have a motion from Councilwoman Doer, a second from Vice Mayor Reese. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Motion carries unanimously. All right, thank you so much. Okay, so we will be back 45 minutes. So let's just say, what do you think, 1:15? 1:15 is probably best.
For us, we're going to go ahead and just state those names into the records, and those records are available on Reno.gov. Dorothy Young, Mary Edwards, and Patricia Price Edwards. Additionally, we did have a public commenter who was here earlier today and wished to speak but ran out of time, given our opening public comment. So Ron McCarty with Keel would like to state that he is in favor of this item, but was not able to stay.
Okay, thank you, Madam Mayor. Do any council members make, need to make any disclosures? Seeing none, I'll look for a staff presentation on the item C2.
Before we get into that, I'm going to go ahead and read this. This is an ordinance introduction, bill number 7219, case number TXT 23-0001, Title 18 Cannabis Package Alcohol Live Entertainment Adult Business Request to amend Reno Municipal Code Title 18 Annexation on Land Development, specifically in Chapter 18.03 Use Regulations Section 18.03.206, Table of Allowed Uses Section 18.03.304 Commercial Uses Section 18.03.306 Industrial Uses Section 18.03.405 Standards for Specific Accessory Uses and Chapter 18.09 Rules of Construction and Definitions Section 18.09.303 Commercial Uses and Section 18.09.306 Accessory Uses in order to revise locational requirements for cannabis uses, amend regulations for package alcohol sales for general retail and accessory uses, to amend standards for daytime and live entertainment uses, and to add local criteria for adult businesses and mixed employment zoning district together with matters which pertain to or are necessarily connected therewith.
Thank you, City Attorney Carl Hall, I appreciate it. Ms. Fuess, always a privilege. Welcome to the dais.
Thank you. Good afternoon. For the record, Angela Fuess, Assistant Director with Development Services. So last June, this council initiated a series of text amendments. And just to kind of refresh you of what those were, there was two different things happening. One was the council priorities. These were the high-level, big changes to the zoning code, impacting things like our sign ordinance and affordable housing initiatives, habitat management initiatives. And so, we initiated those, we are working on those. We have a number of different processes taking place, either internally with different departments or with consultants. The second item that was initiated was what we called the zoning code cleanup. When we adopted this current zoning code about 18 months ago, we knew we'd have to come back and do some cleanups, some code fixes. And it was everything from spelling or grammical errors to things like, well, this section is not consistent with this section, so we have conflicts. And so, we have over 300 items on that list. So the item that we're seeing today is really the first in a series of a number of zoning code amendments. Now, we are going to talk specifically about four items. And just to give you a little bit of background as to why we're talking about these four items. Two of these items, cannabis and adult business, we have caught some changes from our old code to our new code that are significant enough that we feel we need to get these moving forward faster. Cannabis, from a big-picture perspective, we have existing retail, and those are already, those are the dispensaries, those exist. We have two new dispensaries that we've been approved for. So we want to make sure that those dispensaries have the same rules that the previous dispensaries had to follow them. Adult business, again, that's one that we don't get a lot of adult businesses, but we want to make sure the code is clean and correct. And so, we found something that was in the old code that was not in the current code, so it's a cleanup. The other two items, the package alcohol and the live entertainment, these are two big items that we have had a lot of stress over. Stress from the business community, as well as stress from staff in trying to administer these sections of our zoning code. So we said, these are pretty high priorities because they're so convoluted. And really, we have some conflicting regulations. We want to clean that up and, again, be more business-friendly regarding these particular topics. So what I'd like to do, just from a procedural perspective, we have four separate categories. I'm going to take each one, one at a time. It's one slide per topic. I'm going to give you a high level of what the changes are proposed, and then we'll open it up to discussion, just so we don't kind of get confused on what we're talking about. So if you guys are comfortable with that, again, each item, one at a time, and then at the end, you guys can make a motion of however you choose to move this forward.
Ms. Fuess, before you do that, Mr. Hall, are we able to motion on each of the individual items as presented? Meaning, once we discuss cannabis, can we motion on that one and then move to the next one?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
Did you have a question? Sorry, Ms. Weber.
Are we going to have these, you're just going to show us the PowerPoint?
Yep, we're going to do high level. I'm just going to be, again, big picture. There's a lot of technical verbiage.
She was asking if she had a copy.
Oh, great, okay.
Do we?
I don't know that one has been provided to you.
Madam Clerk, can we work on that? Thank you so much. Ms. Fuess, let's start with cannabis.
Okay, so just for clarification, this is not cannabis lounges. That is a completely separate topic that we will be going through a stakeholder outreach process down the road. So this has nothing to do with cannabis lounges. We have two sections in our code, again, our current zoning code, that we want to make sure is consistent with our old code. The number one issue is spacing between dispensaries. When we first adopted this code, again, this was the original kind of cannabis lounge, cannabis, not lounge, cannabis ordinance, our council at that time said, we want to make sure that we don't cluster the dispensaries together. So we, as the city of Reno, put in a requirement that all dispensaries had to be at least 2,500 feet apart. That, for whatever reason, was not carried over to the new code. So that's a pretty simple, clean one. We're taking what was in the old code and just putting it back in the new code. The second one is spacing between cannabis establishments and gaming. In 2020, this is part of the changes to legislature, there was a change with state law that was enacted that said a gaming establishment, this is a non-restricted gaming establishment, so your bigger casinos essentially, you cannot have a cannabis establishment within 1,500 feet. So that seems pretty simple. That's in the code, we're good to go there, no issues there. But what our code has is what we have, these gaming overlays. We didn't used to have gaming overlays, and that's basically areas or pockets within our city where future casinos are allowed to develop. We used to have a zoning district called Tourist Commercial. That's where we knew gaming was allowed. That went away, that zoning designation went away. So now, we just have these gaming overlays. The way that our current code is written is that we have a requirement that we can't have a cannabis establishment within 1,500 feet of that gaming overlay. And again, that really is in conflict with what the NRS regulation is. They're focused on the approved gaming establishments of the casino, so to speak. Those gaming overlays are much broader. It doesn't mean we even have a casino there, but potentially down the road, we could. So again, staff's proposal was just to clean that up, modify that so we're consistent with state law and so that we're consistent with what our old zoning code required. So questions, discussion?
One question.
Councilmember Doer.
Yeah, thank you. I think that was very clear, very well said. Appreciate it. That's what I thought it was. I have one question. At a previous meeting, I think a lot of the council has made it known that they would also like a distance requirement from alcohol and drug treatment facilities. Now, those can move, and I didn't know if this was the moment or you're going to maybe consider bringing that back at a later time.
I think if, absolutely, now is the right time. If council would like to see an additional requirement that we don't allow cannabis establishments within so many feet of drug and alcohol rehab facilities. We have similar language for packaged alcohol, so we could use that same distance requirement if you chose. It's 500 feet.
That's what I thought.
Yep.
And I would be very comfortable with that because it's consistent with something we already have in code. That's, you know, the provision of alcohol. I guess the other question, didn't we have a distance requirement from schools also?
And that is, yep, that's state law, and that's part of our codes. We're not making any changes, that's already there.
And that was like, I think, 1,500, or do you remember?
I think it's 300 feet.
300.
It's schools, playgrounds, community facilities. We pretty much just match state law.
Well, I'm just letting my colleagues know. I would love to address, the mayor's not here, but she's been passionate about it. I have also strongly supported it. I don't know how the rest of my colleagues feel, so.
Okay, any other questions from the body? Hearing none, I'll go to Ms. Doer for a motion, please.
Okay, well, I would motion to adopt or initiate ordinance develop, or, sorry. How would you like me to phrase this, Mr. Attorney? Initiate the ordinance?
Let me fast-forward to a motion at the end, maybe that would help.
Okay.
Yes, so just for the record, John Shipman, City Attorney's Office. So I understand the way we're proceeding today, you just have, you can just motion to say what the recommendation is going to be, and then at the end, you can do the...
Okay, so for the last motion, I'd like to include approval of the items you just identified, as well as setting cannabis 500 feet back from a drug or alcohol rehabilitation center.
And just for clarification, so we have cannabis dispensaries, which is the retail piece.
Right.
We also have the other cannabis, where you can grow it, manufacture it, produce it. Is your preference, that 500 feet from drug and alcohol, specific to the dispensaries, the retail? Or do you want it 500 feet from all cannabis establishments?
Well, I'll ask you a question back. Is it today, is there a requirement for growing beans set back from alcohol or just dispensing?
Zero. We have zero requirements from drug and alcohol rehab facilities right now.
No, what I mean is for alcohol. You said there are already...
Oh, I'm sorry. So from, so alcohol does have a requirement, packaged alcohol, that you can't be within 500 feet of a drug and alcohol place, facility, without going through a conditional use permit process.
Okay. What would be your recommendation?
Probably just the dispensaries, the retail component.
I mean, I'm fine with that. I mean, if we have to do something else later. And let me just let the mayor know that I'm just recommending, they've recommended changing the cannabis section back to how it was. It was an oversight. But I'm also recommending that they add a setback of 500 feet for a dispensary from a drug and alcohol rehabilitation center, which matches with the alcohol. There is already a regulation that alcohol sale be set back. Could you say it yourself?
Yeah, so are, related to alcohol, packaged alcohol. If you are a, let's say, convenience store and you have packaged alcohol, you can't be within 500 feet of a licensed drug and alcohol treatment facility. If you are, you have to go through a conditional use permit process. So what we're talking about today is specifically related to cannabis and dispensaries, not allowing them located within 500 feet of drug and alcohol treatment facilities.
But I would assume they still come back to the body, right?
It would be not allowed at all. So this would restrict them from even bringing it up as an option.
The same way it is for gaming, the 1,500 feet, I think it is?
Correct.
That you're fixing here today, that was oversight. And the 2,500 feet between dispensaries is in the law. So if they're closer, they can't even come?
Correct.
So it would be a, basically a prohibition.
Okay.
Going forward. And I thought, I was bringing it up, you weren't here, but you and I have both been very active in this.
Oh, yeah.
So...
And maybe just to clarify. Yeah, the existing...
I appreciate it, I do. Thank you so much.
So the existing approved dispensaries are allowed where they're at.
Yes.
We're not going to move them.
Correct.
This is regarding any new dispensaries that come online, or if any of our existing tend to move somewhere else, then they would have to follow this regulation.
But I would think, there's not very many licenses left.
There's two.
Two, I was going to say, okay.
But we just want to make sure that we don't get into, that's the whole point they're bringing this back, is to make sure that everybody's on a level playing field. And this would be a new requirement, and so I'm very comfortable with it, so.
Okay, I have a motion by Councilmember Doer, a second by Councilmember Taylor. Any other additional questions or comments from the body? Hearing none, I'll call for the question. And all those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously.
Okay, next topic, packaged alcohol. This was a big one. You guys, about a year ago, had this come before you, and you adopted a packaged alcohol ordinance in January. So for the last 10 months, we have been implementing that packaged alcohol ordinance. We have had a number of questions, concerns, complaints, both from the business community, as well as from our team that has to administer the code. What we found is that some, there are sections where our Title V, which is our business license section, conflicts with our zoning code. And so, what this is, is an attempt to clean that up. We're not proposing to make any significant changes other than to say, what was the intent? Well, let's write it in a way that we all understand what that means and take out any kind of like, well, what did that mean? I think it meant that, I think it meant that. Now, let's just clarify what everything means. So, high level, let's go through a couple of these. So one of them is, we're not touching anything related to packaged alcohol as a primary use. What we're talking about is accessory. So if you have, let's say, a brewery, and you have alcohol, where you can buy it at the brewery where you can buy it at the brewery and take it home and drink it six months later, right? This is not what we're calling to-go. So you can't go and have an open container of beer and get in your car and drive home. That is not allowed, that's not what this is. This is where you go somewhere and you buy alcohol and you take it home and you have it whenever you want. So this whole ordinance, um, again, the changes that we're proposing are only associated with accessory package, not the primary use. What we found is that we allow accessory alcohol. If you have a bar or a restaurant, again, maybe you have a bar that has their own alcohol that they produce, maybe they, you know, have their own beer or, um, maybe they buy it from a different brewery and sell it. But where we allow restaurants isn't consistent with where we allow packaged alcohol. So for instance, if I'm in a neighborhood commercial zoning district, I can have a restaurant with alcohol, but I cannot have packaged alcohol. So we found some conflicts, right? That doesn't make sense. We said, well, everywhere you can have restaurants and breweries and bars, you should have packaged alcohol accessory. So let's just clean that up. The next one was the fresh food. So we had a lot of conversations about food deserts and what a food desert is and how we kind of prevent them from getting worse. Not so much in the downtown area, but definitely in more of these kind of suburban areas outside of our downtown, areas where we don't have access to grocery stores. A lot of people are shopping at mini-marts and convenience stores. And so we said, if you're gonna sell packaged alcohol, we're gonna require that you also have fresh food. So there's a minimum requirement and basically, you know, you're gonna have to show you have shelves with fresh food. So fruits and vegetables, um, things you could go buy and go home and make dinner or breakfast. Some of the, the areas where we require fresh food didn't necessarily make sense. So if you have a restaurant, why would you have to have fresh food? You, you have fresh food as part of your restaurant. What we're talking about is shelves where a customer would go and pick up some apples or some peanut butter and jelly and make a sandwich at home, right? You, you wouldn't go to a restaurant and do that. So we said, that doesn't really make sense. So let's just clean up where we're gonna require fresh food and where it's not required. So here we have a list where it's not required would be restaurants, commercial kitchens, bakeries, bars, and microbreweries. Where we still want to require that fresh food is places like hotels. We have a lot of hotels and motels, um, particularly in the downtown area and 4th Street area where they have maybe a little retail component. Let's make sure that those places have fresh food, right? That we know there's a lot of people living in these hotels and motels. Let's, let's give them the ability to have fresh food right there. So if those hotels have a retail component and they're selling packaged alcohol, whether it's beer or Fireball, um, they would have to also have fresh food. General retail stores, again, this is not grocery stores, this is more your mini-marts, and then of course, convenience stores. So again, that just clarifies where we want to see that fresh food. Now, one of the, the, the big differences that again, from a staff's perspective we're proposing is right now, we have some requirements when you have packaged alcohol of when you would trigger a conditional use permit. So a conditional use permit, it's about $4,400. It's about a three-month process and it requires approval from the Planning Commission. What we have found in the last 10 months is that most of these uses, we're giving them the same, um, conditions of approval. So it's kind of a copy and paste, right? If you have, um, a convenience store, we're gonna look at our SafeScape standards, which is part of our business license, and we'll say, that convenience store has to follow these SafeScape, SafeScape standards, this set of rules. So we add it as a condition. So we kind of said, well, at the end of the day then, what are we trying to do? Is there a way to help some of these businesses to speed up this process faster? But we don't want to circumvent the public input process. So what we're proposing is to take that from that three-month process to a 30-day process. We call it a minor conditional use permit. You submit your application, uh, these are slightly cheaper, they're about $4,000 instead of $4,400. So not a whole lot cheaper, still expensive. Um, but it's a 30-day review instead of a three-month review. So once we get the application, we as staff give it to the, the police department, our code enforcement department, business licenses department. We send out public notices to all the neighbors within 750 feet. We take all of that input and we put together the conditions of approval and we write a staff report. So it's the same process, but it does not go to Planning Commission and it cuts the time in half by about two months. So what is previously three months, we're proposing to take it to a one-month process. Um, this is something, and I highlighted it just to highlight that from a Planning Commissioner perspective, one of the commissioners brought up a concern of having a conditional use permit gives people the ability to go to a meeting and voice their concerns. And so there was a question of, is that, do we want to take that away from people? Again, you can still provide public comment, that goes to staff. We still notice everyone the same way. Um, there were other perspectives on the Planning Commission that said, we should try and be more business-friendly. So they weren't in support of requiring the conditional use permit. They were comfortable with that minor conditional use permit. So something for you guys to think about. And then finally, um, a question of where should we allow accessory packaged alcohol by right? If you're in the downtown area, we're not talking about the downtown. What we're talking about is the, the outer areas, more the suburban areas. So right now, we say if you are close to a school or close to a park or close to residential zoning, some of these uses, um, if you're selling packaged alcohol, should also have to go through that public hearing process. And we looked at the list and we said, again, if you're a restaurant, should you have to go through a public hearing process because you have packaged alcohol, right? If you're going, if you're a restaurant, um, and you already trigger a conditional use permit because that use now we're tacking on yet another process for you to have to go through. So the ones that we felt should be allowed by right would things like the restaurants, the bars, and the microbreweries. So those uses themselves, if they trigger a conditional use permit, this doesn't exempt them from that. But specific to packaged alcohol, we're saying, let's not tack on another conditional use permit, let's just make it allowed by right. Now, the ones that again, from a sensitive use perspective, if you're a hotel or that general retail or the convenience store and you're within a certain distance of the parks, the schools, the residentially zoned property, we're saying you should still go through that, um, process, whether it's a conditional use permit or a minor conditional use permit. So big picture, these are the things that we, we kind of had conflicts within the code and our, our staff had a hard time trying to figure out what, what did we say, what did we mean? So this will clean up, um, those conflicts and again, make it much easier for the, the applicants to say, here's the rules, now I understand the rules. Let's go back to high level, that again, um, this is where we're gonna talk about just discussion. But high level, um, I did want to get your guys' input on going from a three-month conditional use permit process and modifying that to the minor conditional use permit process. So three months versus one month. The big thing is Planning Commission review and approval versus staff review and approval. Staff's, staff's comment, um, proposal was to reduce it to a minor conditional use permit. And so again, your, your feedback is what we're looking for today.
Okay, thank you, Ms. Foose. Let me just say a couple of things. First is, um, I know that every time we open up Title 18, we're making choices about the staff time. So I want to say thank you for, um, sort of putting these together in a way that is manageable and also trying to, um, you know, take direction from this body. Because we voted as a body to move a certain set of things forward, perhaps more quickly than other things, right? If we have 27 things which are a priority, um, we've got to prioritize them to help you in the process of putting them together and bringing them back, because it is all staff time. So as a body, I think we have consistently said, um, that we want to be, especially as we've come out of a pandemic in which our small and, uh, small businesses and, and other types of business of every size, I suppose, were impacted in a way that is profound. But we've said, as we recover, these are the kinds of things that we are hearing from small businesses about. So when our, when our bar owners come to us and say, this is a concern for us. When our, uh, you know, restaurants come and say, this is a concern for us. So it's kind of, your effort is, uh, sort of mixing the two issues and making them for us to be able to be resolved, which is a benefit to them. So I want to thank you for that. Can I ask sort of a very specific question? And I'll use, um, you know, one specific location and we'll talk about before, which is Rum Sugar Lime. So during the pandemic, they were able to do essentially a version of packaging their alcohol. I don't know if it's technically packaged alcohol in the classic planning sense. But, right, they bought all this equipment to be able to bottle their spirits, right? And it was sort of how they got it out the pandemic. No one was coming to the bar, but they could still order online, get their cocktail, go pick it up, take it home and enjoy it. Is any of this help that business to keep doing what they were doing during the pandemic? Or is there some other code section, version of business licensing that is impacted?
And I, I don't, I don't know that I have experience at Rum Sugar Lime, but I think we're talking about the to-go component where you have an open container, is that what it was?
No, it's not really that. It's more like they are a specialty, look, they're a bar that I have been to on social media. People joke that that's the only place I go to. I do go to other places, but they're a bar. And so they do sort of, I don't know, we'll call it high-end specialty cocktails, um, a Mai Tai. So they actually bought the bottling equipment to, I guess there are people, mixologists, mix it, pour it, pour it in the bottle, cap it, put wax around it to keep it sealed. I don't know how to say it. Um, and then you come in and buy it. So is this something that they can keep doing under our old code, current code, the revised version you're talking about?
If they have the correct business license to do it, right? They'd have to make sure that they have the correct packaged alcohol license. Um, and so that, that would be required. This is assuming all of these businesses that we're talking about have a business license to serve or to sell packaged alcohol.
And those licenses are related, right, to health and safety oftentimes, right? Totally understand. Okay, you've answered my question, thank you. I'll ask if anyone on the body has questions. Councilmember Dewar.
Yeah, um, thank you. And, um, so I'm not sure I knew, understood what your answer was to Mr. Reese's question. So anything we're proposing here either helps or hurts that? The scenario he.
So there's a couple of things. If they legally have the, they have a license to sell packaged alcohol, whether it's beer, wine, or liquor.
Then they're fine.
This is what this ordinance affects.
This would be the new set of rules.
Anyone just has a to-go Mai Tai, that is not allowed anywhere anymore because we're out of COVID and those restrictions no longer are allowed.
Okay. So maybe they're in a gray area where they bottled it and capped it and sealed it. But my question was, my personal question was about the yellow here. This was very confusing to me. So it only applies to packaged alcohol, I assume, because it's on this page?
Correct.
Okay, could you just give us an example? Because I was, I was really struggling. You did, you did a great job of all the right words, but I don't have maybe enough background to fully understand what you were telling us.
So let's take for instance, there is a restaurant in Midtown called Craft.
Yes.
You can go in, it's not even a restaurant, it's just they serve alcohol. You can go into Craft and you go into their cooler and you can get some really cool specialty beers. And you could open it and drink it there, or you can buy it and take it home.
Right.
Um, so that's packaged alcohol.
Yes.
So if we had that type of business, let's say in your ward. If they are next to a school or a park or again, some of these sensitive areas, residential zoning, then currently they would have to go through a conditional use permit process.
A CUP. Used to be called special use permit.
Correct.
And it takes three months is what you were saying? And you would rather have it just be a staff review in 30 days?
What we found is that when we, when we review these applications, we add conditions of approval.
Right.
And we found that for packaged alcohol in general, we're adding the same conditions of approval.
Over and over.
Mm-hmm. And so we said, why are we doing that?
No, I get it.
Versus kind of helping to speed up the process at the end results the same.
Now I do get it.
Yep.
Um, so it would have the same requirements, the laws are not changing.
Correct.
Uh, they would still have to get a CUP, but it would be a minor and it would be done in 30 days.
Yep.
Is that it?
Correct.
Okay. It wouldn't go to the Planning Commission, it wouldn't go to us.
Correct.
Today, alcohol licenses are on our agenda.
Completely separate licenses?
Because that's the primary.
Not what we're talking about.
And this is accessory.
License is just the ability to get a license, right?
Sure.
Like having a driver's license doesn't mean I'm buying you a car.
Right.
You have to get a driver's license first. Similar to alcohol. So what we're saying is, once you get your license to sell packaged alcohol, here's the car. But here's the rules to drive the car.
Gotcha. That was very helpful, very well done. I might have round two question later.
Let me see if anyone else has any questions. Nope, okay, Councilmember Dewar, we'll come back to you.
Well, um, I wanted to compliment you on clarifying this fresh food thing. So I think that's very helpful. Obviously, you're already a restaurant, you're making fresh food. Why do you have to have more fresh food? Like, you made the food, you also have to have the apple, right? So I, I, I think you did a good job of sorting those out. What I'm unclear in this list, I understand what hotels are and motels, I understand what convenience stores, but I don't understand what general retail stores are, because is that where you go to like, uh, Nordstrom's, Backlot, or, um, you know, Junkie, or any retail store and buy us something? What does this mean?
This is, you know, uh, Dillard's wouldn't have packaged alcohol, right? Nordstrom's wouldn't have a packaged alcohol license. You don't go to Nordstrom's and buy beer. But when you go to a mini-mart.
Yeah. I just say, I wasn't sure what a mini-mart was versus a convenience store, when you used that example.
Yeah, so a convenience store could be.
I know what those are.
Yep.
But what is a mini-mart?
We have a lot of, and especially in our, um, kind of infill areas, but outside of downtown, just kind of this business that's popped up and maybe they have something specific that they sell related to Mexican food or Chinese food.
Gotcha.
And a lot of those kind of mini-marts, maybe they also sell packaged alcohol.
Okay.
So we want to make sure.
That those would have the fresh food.
Exactly. So not only can you sell Twinkies and, you know, pickles, we want you to have fresh food.
Right. Totally agree. And then this last one, when should accessory packaged alcohol be allowed by right? Just run that over again. You're saying if you are a restaurant, bakery, bar, microbrewery, you could have packaged alcohol by right? Is that what you're saying?
In our.
It's almost like the reverse of the first one? Like, in this one, you're saying where you can, not where you can't?
So outside of the downtown area, so the bulk of the city of Reno, we say if you are selling packaged alcohol, again, a mini-mart, convenience store, hotel, restaurant, um, if you're selling packaged alcohol and you are within 500 feet of those sensitive uses.
I got you.
Then we require a conditional use permit.
Right.
And so we looked at that list and we said, is it really fair for a restaurant to have to go through a conditional use permit because they're within 500 feet of a school? They're already, the business is the restaurant, right?
Right, and the restaurant allows alcohol typically if they get that accessory license.
Yes.
And then should they also be able to have this packaged?
Yep.
Is that it?
Yep.
Okay.
And other uses where we said, let's take a, a harder look at it and see if it does make sense. You know, um, like a, a mini-mart next to a playground.
Yeah.
We want to make sure we're not creating conflict, exactly. So we felt that it was still important to have that review. And again, our, our proposal was to go to a minor conditional use permit. So code enforcement and Reno Police Department and Planning still weigh in and say, this is a problem area, we highly recommend that you add these additional conditions.
I think you've reached a good balance that you have the review, the CUP, but you are doing it at a staff level. And I, I think you've kind of reached a good balance myself, so leave it at that.
Okay, any other questions on this item? Okay, Councilmember Dewar, can we get the proposed motion up, Ms. Foose?
Yeah.
And I'll come to you, Councilmember Dewar.
Okay, um, I guess I would motion to approve the recommended changes in the packaged alcohol ordinances as per the presentation.
Okay. And so with that, just to clarify, we are comfortable with just going the minor conditional use permit rather than the full conditional use permit.
Well, that's what you've recommended, I think.
Yep.
Right? So yes.
Great. Okay.
Okay, I have a motion by Councilmember Dewar, a second by Councilmember Taylor. Any additional questions on this item at this time? Hearing none, I'll call for the question, all those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously.
All right, next one up.
Just to clarify, it's because you are requiring a CUP. It's not that you're saying any staff can issue anything.
Correct.
You, you have a set of requirements and that's like, agreeing.
Yep.
Ms. Foose, before you go into live entertainment, I just thought it would be a good moment to pause. I, I should have mentioned before the voting on it. Um, and look, we have a lot of candidates still in the room who are applicants for the vacancy. This is some pretty, I don't know, we'll call it wonky or nerdy planning stuff. Uh, not everything that the city does is really interesting or exciting or has any element to it that is, uh, gonna make everybody be excited about it. But a lot of the work that we do as a body is related to this. It's Title 18 and it's the difference between how much floor space can a mini-mart have versus how much a convenience store can have, what the requirement is. So although not as exciting as some of the other things that people may have some passion about, this is a lot of the work that we do up here. So I just thought because we were here and there are still some great applicants in the room, um, they might get some humor out of the fact that some of the stuff that we do is this very basic, everyday stuff. Uh, so thanks for kind of helping me to understand the, the nature of, you know, sort of the juxtaposition between some of the more interesting or passionate things and, and the kind of work that happens, especially on the staff side, because it, it is work on your staff and you to be where we are today. Um, the next one is particularly, uh, uh, one that we'll have some, I think, lively, uh, discussion about. Uh, something that I know the mayor has been passionate about is, uh, encouraging our small businesses and live entertainment folks in that regard, but might also generate a lot of questions. So I'll let you take the presentation away.
Okay, so let me just kind of go back, let's say, two years, right? Our old zoning code did not call out live entertainment. Uh, when somebody came in with, we call it a cabaret business license. And cabaret has nothing to do with adult businesses. Cabaret is anything with singing or dancing or just entertainment value, excluding adult businesses. Um, you would come in for a cabaret license and that gives you the ability, let's say I'm a restaurant and I want to have a guy play a guitar at my restaurant while I'm serving food. That would require a business license for a cabaret. So when that came through the Planning Department, because it wasn't specific to our zoning, we would look at it and say, oh, we're gonna kind of pick and choose, like, what your hours should be allowed for that activity. Should you be allowed inside or outside, right? We kind of take a look at each business and where it was and what they were proposing and add some conditions to their business license. So we said, well, that, that doesn't really make sense. Why don't we put some standards in place so that the business owner can go to this zoning code and understand what they're up against? So we adopted the new zoning code and we have these great live entertainment standards. What we have found from, um, a, a, a business complaint, um, perspective, as well as kind of trying to administer this, is maybe we went a little too far. You know, when we talk about live entertainment, in the back of our minds, we're thinking loud bands at 2:00 in the morning. But it's really all encompassing. Everything from as simple as the guy playing the guitar to karaoke to DJ trivia is all included in live entertainment. So like I said, the, the, the big issue is the businesses are saying, this isn't really working. Why are you guys adding this requirement? The bars in particular are the ones that are coming forward saying, hey, I have to get a, a business license that will allow me to have a guy playing a guitar or karaoke. And the planning team is now saying, oh, you also have to go through a conditional use permit. So three months, $4,400 and Planning Commission process. And so we're, we're, we realize that we're really just inhibiting businesses and so is there a better way to do this? So what we said is, maybe we should just come up with a set of standards that everybody follows the same set of standards. And it's everything from, well, what hours should we allow entertainment? Um, should we allow it indoors or outdoors? Can we do something for like at the downtown area where we have people waiting in line outside? Um, a lot of times those lines become loud and unruly. Do we have the ability to kind of do something with that? So we put together, um, our solution of here's the standards, and this is citywide. So whether you're in downtown or Somerset or South Meadows, it's the same set of standards across the board. Number one, if you're doing anything outdoors, a band outdoors, a guy playing a guitar outdoors, you have to shut it down by ten PM. Also, if you're doing outdoor activities, you cannot do it if you're within a hundred and fifty feet of residentially zoned property. The concern is, um, you know, again, you have maybe a patio at a bar and it's next door to a house. We want to make sure we're protecting those residents living next door. In terms of indoor entertainment, you can do that to eleven o'clock at night. And we came up with eleven o'clock because citywide, that's the hours of operation that all businesses can have. You could open till eleven o'clock at night. If you want to exceed those hours for your business, you have to go through a separate process. So we said, that makes sense. Um, in terms of those indoor activities, we also want to make sure that if, if you have indoor activities and it's, it's loud, you have to shut your doors and your windows. Again, so if you have neighbors, we want to make sure by nine o'clock at night, you're shutting your doors and your windows. You can still have your karaoke or whatever you're doing, just shut it down by nine o'clock, that the doors and the windows. Um, we also, if, if we have new development coming forward, we want to make sure that those buildings are built so the doors are pointed away from houses, right? When you open a door, that sound travels out. So we want to make sure if you're doing a design, just design it. Do a smart design. So we put that in as a requirement. And then one of the big ones too is citywide, but where we see it most is downtown, is, is the queuing. So when we have people waiting in line for, um, bands or a special cover charge that starts at ten, so everyone's there at nine, we want to make sure that we have the ability to control those lines. And so we put in a requirement that that business has to come up with a plan. And our team, both code enforcement and Reno Police Department and planning can look at it and say, we're comfortable with this. And that could mean everything from, we're going to make you put in security, right? If you have people standing in line on the sidewalk next to a busy street, we want to make sure you have security. So we're going to work with each of those businesses on a case by case. We didn't think it was fair to have like a, a one size fits all. It really is a unique case by case basis. So big picture, everyone that wants to do any kind of entertainment still has to come in for that business license, that driver's license to do cabaret. And then this is the, the rules that you agree to follow. If you want to exceed any of those rules, maybe you're a bar that wants to stay open till two in the morning. Great. Here's the process. And that would be the conditional use permit process. So that is the full public hearing, three month process. And, and the difference here is that we felt some of these businesses, I mean, truly, they're doing DJ trivia. They're, they're really not causing any problems with noise or parking. Um, other businesses that want to stay open till three in the morning with loud bands, um, that does have an impact on neighborhoods, even in a downtown area. And so we said, let's go through that special, or I'm sorry, that conditional use permit process and get, um, feedback from the neighbors on that particular site and any particular issues we have. So good and bad from a planning commissioner's perspective. Um, there were questions brought up of why are we limiting outdoor entertainment a hundred and fifty feet? If you're within a hundred and fifty feet of residentially zoned property? Why don't we say if you're within a hundred and fifty feet of a residential use? And where that becomes a problem, for the most part, is our downtown, right? Our downtown has a mixed use. We encourage people to live and recreate and entertain all within the same block. Um, so that would basically limit where we allow outdoor entertainment because we have houses and we have condos spread really throughout everywhere. Um, citywide, I mean, from a code perspective, we don't base things on residential uses. We base things on residential zoning. That's kind of a best practices. Other jurisdictions do that as well. So that, that was a concern that was brought up by one of the planning commissioners. Um, another planning commissioner said, well, what about the businesses that are allowed to stay open till two in the morning or twenty-four hours a day? Now we're really limiting what they have the right to do. So for just big picture, um, our, our downtown area is allowed twenty-four hours a day. Our midtown, if you're on Virginia Street, you can stay open twenty-four hours a day. For the most part, the rest of the city is generally you have to shut down by eleven or you can extend your hours if you go through a separate process. So, um, from, from your guys' kind of discussion, I am interested to hear if, if you feel that, again, meeting those, you know, five or six items by right is sufficient. Um, or should we be a little bit more relaxed and say, in the downtown area, you can be open twenty-four hours because you could be open twenty-four hours by right?
Okay. Okay.
Wait, wait, wait. Where's our DJ trivia folks? Where are they? This is a big deal for them.
It is.
I, I love that we are doing this and we're looking at how to be much more business friendly. I mean, listen, our small businesses have such a tough time trying to thrive and survive and especially during COVID, those kinds of things. I want to say thank you to the, um, staff. You guys have done a tremendous job. Thank you, um. City manager Doug Thornley, thank you. I really appreciate this. No, I really do. We had a lot of conversations and, um, you made it happen. And I think, how long has this been in place? Forty years?
Man, I, I think, you know, in general, the, the cabaret license program, forty years is probably not an inaccurate.
Forty years?
Yes.
Unbelievable. Things have to change and evolve because business changes and evolves. Cities change and evolve. People change and evolve. All these things. And let's hope and pray that we do. That means we get better. So.
Development services and your code enforcement and your business license folks, I think we're the tip of the spear here. I mean, I think they've been incredibly innovative and, uh, willing to try new things, particularly in light of the pandemic and some of the regulatory changes that we had on an interim basis and making, um, making some of those things permanent now to support our, our business community and make sure that we have a workable regulatory framework moving forward. Makes a lot of sense.
Okay, I want to specifically commend you. Thank you very much. Thank you. All right, go ahead, Angela. Sorry, I just need to point that out because he, he was going to stay very humble and I wanted to make sure he understood that we're really grateful you brought this back. Thank you.
Oh, man, I go ahead.
Sorry, go back to you, Vice Mayor. It's, uh, your item. Sorry.
Madam Mayor, thank you. I, I'm, Ms. Foose, I suppose I want to say a couple of things. One is the history of how we got here, I think, um, just so that the public understands is there was this general concern about the, we'll call it the old timey nature of cabaret licensing, right? And so, um, you know, what happened is, is certainly the DJ trivia folks are, uh, to be commended for their advocacy because they showed up, they wrote letters, they raised concerns. Um, you know what, you know, when nerds unite, it's really, you're in trouble for it, right? And so, um, and I've had the privilege of going and playing DJ trivia four or five times in the last couple of months. Really great event, uh, great people. I think Connor McQuibby, who was here this morning, uh, is one of the hosts. Um, but that cabaret license element to it is part of the, the historical reason how we got to here. So for me, I want to focus on, um, sort of saying, hey, uh, in the status quo, we have cabaret licenses. As we move forward and you've reframed the issue, you've said, how can live entertainment that's accessory to a restaurant or bar be allowed? Right? And that's how your, uh, slide is set up. And then on the other side, it gives the breakdown of how we get there. So I want to focus for a minute on the allowed by right concept. So explain what you mean when you say allowed by right. So I'm a bar, a Big Horn Tavern, and I want DJ trivia to come in. Under the status quo, to do that, I would have had to have had a particular license, a cabaret license related to live entertainment. Is that fair?
Yep.
Okay. Under the proposed changes that you have been diligently working on and which the mayor has really advocated for and leaned on the city manager to make happen, um, you're saying these are allowed by right. There will be no process by which you have to come to the, uh, city hall and fill out in anything and pay in anything. You get to do it because you already have, uh, a business going on there. Is that fair?
No, um, you still have to go through that cabaret license. You still have to get the business license, right? You still have to get your driver's license. That, that doesn't change.
Okay.
What does change is you would no longer have to get a conditional use permit.
Great.
And that's the three month process.
Because it would be allowed by right.
Correct.
Okay, so they're still having to pay a fee of some kind to do the live entertainment.
Yep.
Right? Um, so that might be something we have to talk about. Um, what is the effort that's been undertaken, uh, to bring business owners into this conversation so that they are fully aware of what you propose? Because at the end of the day, I don't own a bar. I don't own a restaurant. I don't know all of the elements that go into making a successful endeavor in that process. So I want to understand and make sure that we have, because I don't see DJ trivia here in the room. And I would have thought that if DJ trivia knew that they were going to be an item of heated discussion, that they would have come, right? So what efforts have we undertaken to gather their input into this process?
I will say, big picture, um, over the last eighteen months, we have dealt with nothing but complaints. I have not heard one business say, this is a great section of your zoning code. So glad you have this. Not one. Um, we have had many, many complaints on a weekly basis, sometimes daily basis. So from our perspective, we said, let us know what your concerns are. Let's see if we can come up with, you know, some solutions to fix it. And so we, we did not reach back out to those businesses other than to say, hey, if you're in the process now of going through a conditional use permit, maybe hold off and let's see what planning commission and city council come up with. Um, so we've advised kind of people to kind of wait and see what's, what, what the outcome is. Um, and most of them were overjoyed. I would say all of them were overjoyed. Um, that there was potentially going to be some less restriction, um, that allowed them to do what businesses just do.
Well, and I'll just say anecdotally, that's the reception that I've gotten as I've spoken to people about this particular item. Because if I don't know about it, I'll go out and ask. So I've asked businesses who are bar owners, restaurants, people where they do live entertainment. And, and basically they said, you mean, we can do what we want to do? And, and they're very happy about it. So. Appreciate that. Um, and I'll turn it over to Councilmember Doer. I think you were interested.
Yeah, thank you. Um, first of all, I want to echo the mayor's comments because I was right there on the DJ trivia thing, talking to them. Um, we, we were here, we heard them. I had a similar question to Councilmember Reese is, I'm surprised they're not here to like cheer us on, um, say, go do this. So they must, um, have some sense that we're doing it. So just a few quick questions. Um, I, I like the direction you've gone. I think you said you can do it by right if you follow these rules. Now, where we get in trouble sometimes at the city is enforcing the rules. Like then code enforcement comes in and then it becomes a long drawn out thing. So have you given that any thought? Like what happens afterwards?
So, uh, from a code enforcement's perspective, we work on, we're complaint driven.
Yeah.
So when we get a complaint from somebody that says they're having music at two in the morning.
Exactly.
We would respond and say, you know, A, do you guys have a cabaret license? And B, if this was in place, know that you have to shut it down by eleven PM?
Yeah.
Or go through that conditional use permit process.
I think this is a huge step forward and I'm very supportive. What I also at the same time, because I think most businesses, like most people, want everyone to follow the same rules and not to have the people that, um, give the egg on the face, you know, make others look bad by breaking the rules. So I'd love to know that we have sort of a three strikes or out or some kind of process where you don't, you keep staying open until two AM and we are going to, um, either shut you down until you don't or have some penalty, some fine, something so that everyone is following the same rules. And, and then I'd be extremely comfortable because I wanted us to expand, uh, the ability. I wanted us to not have to make these people get a cabaret license on top of, I mean, excuse me, a, um, did I say that right?
Conditional use permit.
Conditional use permit, um, on top of everything. I definitely wanted that to go away. So thank you for doing that. The stuff that's in red, this is where I'm a little unclear, is that like new or why is it in red?
I highlighted that because planning commission brought that up. Uh, we had one planning commissioner in particular, again, that said, why, why do we base that hundred and fifty foot buffer?
Yeah.
On residential zoning? Why don't we base it on a residential use?
Well, it's very clear to me because at any time, we can get an application for residents within the residential zoning. I mean, and, and in time, that's why it's a best practice in.
Yep.
Planning. So I totally support where you all are, which is that this, we, we work by zoning, not by an actual use.
Yep.
Because the uses can change throughout. Okay, so totally agree. Um, and then tell me about the second part. Create a mechanism for a business to exceed the regulations. Is that new? Or a twist on something we're already doing?
Right. We, we want the ability, because I mean, we definitely want activity past eleven PM.
Right.
This is Reno.
Right.
Nevada. People come here because they can go out starting at midnight. Um, so we, we didn't want to limit those businesses. But again, we wanted to say, well, how do we find that happy medium? Whether you're in downtown or in South Meadows, how do we kind of treat everyone equally?
Well, I like it. I think again, that you have done a very good job of balancing.
Mm-hmm.
You know, in other words, expanding use categories, reducing restrictions that are appropriate as long as everybody follows the rules.
Yep.
Note to our manager, because he's in charge of code enforcement. Um, and then allowing though a process where if they want to do something different, they have that process. It's going to take a little longer, but they, they have a benefit at the end of it. So, and we get to weigh in. Or is it just planning commission?
Just planning commission.
Okay, planning commission gets to weigh in. I like that.
Okay, any other additional questions? I know Councilmember Taylor, you have some intimate familiarity with this item and you are a downtown resident, right? So I think it's an important point to make.
I am thinking. I tend to use my bottle, but I guess we're on a different system now.
Okay, I, I do want to just ask that. I can finally see her up here, but you can't see it here.
But I'm way over here.
So.
Right.
Madam Mayor, I haven't had a chance to train you on the new system yet. So I think if for the time being, we could continue with our super fancy technology hand water bottles, that would be great.
Okay, okay. So we're going to do the water bottle duty. And then just quickly, we will be able to see it up here eventually, right?
We're working on that.
Because I did, I saw something come over to the screen. It showed how everyone voted. I love that because it looks so much more transparent. People know. A lot of times we can vote and people have no idea who voted yes, who voted no.
Yep.
That's all I wanted to know. All right.
Okay. Thank you, Angela. Thank you for you and your team. I know code used to be like this, now it's like this. So that's a huge improvement, a lot of work. Couple clarifying questions. You still need a business license, the driver's license. And then if you wanted to do DJ trivia, you would still need a cabaret license.
Correct.
Okay. What about the folks, the existing folks? Are every, is everybody grandfathered in that's down there now?
They are. If they currently have a cabaret license, this doesn't impact them. This is any future business that's requesting a cabaret license. We then look at the code and say, are you following these rules? Or do you want to exceed, you know, the hours of operation? Then this would be in addition. So anyone that's in place now legally, um, they're grandfathered in.
So if we have a bar that's downtown, I don't know, Fusion, and maybe they're not following these things now, this is not going to be reapplied to them. It's not going to be retroactive.
No.
Okay. So what about downtown future outdoor, indoor entertainment? Are they going to be restricted to this eleven PM?
If somebody came in like Glow Plaza, let's say we had another Glow Plaza come in, they would come in for a completely separate request, right? They're an outdoor entertainment venue. We would look at that completely independent of this.
Because?
They're coming in as a very specific outdoor recreation use.
Not as an additional use to a bottle or something?
Yeah, I mean, if, if they came in as a.
That's their primary use.
Exactly. Yep.
But if another, so what I'm saying is I'm, I have concerns about limiting what we're doing downtown and midtown basically because one of the public comments that we heard today said, hey, we don't even have people here until ten o'clock at night. But I heard you say something along Virginia Street in downtown, these don't necessarily apply. Did I miss that?
So, um, just, we were talking about hours of operations. So as a business, right? The hours a business can operate, if you're in the downtown area, you can operate twenty-four hours a day. If you're in the midtown and you're adjacent to Virginia Street, you can operate twenty-four hours a day. That's the business.
Do you have to stop having live entertainment at eleven o'clock inside?
Based on this proposed language, you would.
Unless you get the.
You could go through that conditional use permit and ask for extended hours.
So let's say Tyler's Bar wants to have Bingo past eleven o'clock at night. Are they going to have to come in and try and get a CUP every single time they want to do that?
It would be a one-time deal. So you come in for your conditional use permit and then for the rest of your business life, you are allowed to have those extended hours. But yes, if you're Bingo at twelve o'clock at night, based on what's proposed here, you will need a conditional use permit.
Okay, but it's, and I'm sorry, existing now in downtown, do you have to come in for a CUP for anything after eleven o'clock?
No.
Hmm. I need to think on this. Thank you.
Ms. Foose, what about, uh, our enforcement issues? So you're a bar that has been a bad actor. Uh, you are having lots of calls for service. Uh, you are not doing what is expected of you or, or behaving as a bad neighbor. What do we do then? Who can get involved? How, how do we solve that?
We use a combination of our code enforcement team, our business license, um, code enforcement team, as well as Reno Police Department. And I know there's a couple in particular kind of bad players. And so we're kind of working with all three of those departments to try and figure out a solution. At some point, we have the ability to start pulling their business license.
Okay, and so Councilmember Doer made a good point about, you know, not wanting to catch anyone just on the off chance that they've made a mistake, an honest error of judgment. Um, but at some point in time, we can pull their ticket, right? Their business license. When was the last time we did that?
Oh, and I can't speak for business license, but it hasn't happened in quite some time, I believe.
Okay.
But here comes Alex.
Yeah, Mr. Woodley, question of the hour.
Yes, good afternoon. Alex Woodley for the record, Director of Code Enforcement.
Um, in 2018, uh, that I can recall, the CUF headquarters was the last business license, which coincidentally is the location currently known as Fusion, that we did pursue the revocation of their license.
Well, and again, Mr. Woodley, thank you for being here. Of course, an important conversation because it's not just licensing. It also is what happens after they have the license to drive, who is enforcing the regulations, right? So your team does a very good job of that. I don't know that we as a city council have been very good at saying, hey, go forth and use the tools that we have. But I want to make sure is whatever rules there are, they're known to people, they're enforced fairly and evenly across all segments of any particular, you know, group of, of restaurants, bars, uh, based on their location. And, you know, I think you do get to a point where you know who some of the bad actors are. Um, of course, bad actors can be, uh, impressed upon to become good actors. Uh, and so I think, you know, councilmember Taylor is concerned about a number of things. Councilmember Doer equally so, and, and likewise, I am concerned that once we issue the business license or the cabaret license, in this case related to live entertainment, it just shouldn't be that we just forget about the neighbor existing again and we go about our merry way. When complaints happen, it's that we need to be tracking them. We need to have, give you the resources as a department to know. And then we have to support you in those efforts. We can't just tell you we want to do it. And then when it comes to the, you know, rubber meets the road, not do it. So that's on us, right? So, um, that it's been since 2018 and, and that you and Ms. Foose both couldn't recall a lot of examples. Either says, um, we don't have a lot of bad actors, or, you know, we just haven't had the ability to really, you know, crack down on whatever the issue is. So again, I think we want the same things, which is vibrant communities, especially as downtown changes as more people are added to it. Midtown and Virginia Street are its own complex corridor. I mean, Mr., um, uh, Ty- Tyler Colton's bar, uh, the Emerson. Great venue, but really near and adjacent to homes. So it gets complicated, right? When you get people butting up against their home where they, is their sanctuary, where they need to rest and recover and a bar which needs to be successful. So all those things are balancing acts that we're trying to accomplish. Okay, councilmember Doer.
And especially, um, when the house is already there, we're changing the rules. We're, we're giving more leniency, which I do support. But at the same time, I like the fact that you've put in a caution here, Angela. So to me, it's a very good balance because the people move there, you might say, well, they moved there and they knew there was a bar there. Yes, but we changed the rules. We said that they can operate longer. We could say they change in decibels, whatever we're saying. But today we're saying, um, you know, shut off at 11. Um, it used to be 10. So we're giving some more latitude. So I think we do have to be careful for all the existing uses, you know, that are in place. So I think you've come up with a good, I'm talking to you. Um, a good balance myself. You know, it's a good step forward. I think you're right. Knowing the Emerson, when I think, Emerson? Yeah. Yeah, there is literally. Right. A residence. Right. A few feet. Right. And they could come and say, hey, I didn't know anything about this. Now I can't sleep.
Yep.
And, um, you know, and that's one of those sort of issues that we look at with the Eddy, having, remember? I actually like that, especially, um, you know, sort of our new businesses sometimes that we look at just to kind of check in. And I do think, I think people follow probably checks and balances a little bit better, but you also don't want to overreach. But at the same time, when that adjacency is so, so close. Okay. Oh, you, my question was, sorry, got sidetracked. Um, remind me what a cabaret license costs?
Oh, maybe Alex would know. I have no idea.
What is it?
I can't recall right now, but it's a lot cheaper than the alcohol license.
Yeah.
Yes.
I can't remember, but if I could get that, that would be great. I think it was a few hundred bucks, but I don't know why I think that.
Okay.
Well, but Madam Mayor, your question raises a good, uh, point, which is, um, something that perhaps is beyond the ability of us to communicate about today. But that is whether or not a cabaret license has outlived its usefulness, right? It would be nice to know, um, how much money is generated in the cabaret licensing fee process. Because we're not trying to make money off it. The cabaret license fee goes to do all the kind of code compliance related issues. It's about checking out that the location is well-designed for it, that it's got ingress and egress, the proper parking. We're not, again, it's not trying to make an additional fee on businesses who are already paying a fee. It's to make sure that we have the ability to do the code enforcement that makes for a livable city, right? But there are going to be business owners who are going to say, hey, I love that you've made all these changes, but I was hoping you would just eliminate the cabaret license fee or the cabaret license process altogether. How, how do we respond to that?
I think that is something we can bring up, not part of this text amendment. Um, we look at fees, our city fees periodically. I think we probably have something coming up in a couple of months where, where we will take a look. I think in the meantime, we can do some research, have our, um, business license team figure out, how much are we charging and, and how much money are we generating from cabarets?
Right. Cause I'm going to say it's not very much, right?
Well, and I think the mayor's on to the right thing. Look, I'm, uh, personally been very involved and, um, Nick Sacconi in my office team has been very involved in the biggest little business partnership. And it's essentially a way to waive fees in this calendar year for businesses making under a certain threshold, right? So the same question really is arising in my mind as we work through it together here on the dais today, about whether or not cabaret license fees are in and of themselves a necessary component of being successful to do what we want to do, which is make sure that we have great bars and restaurants and vibrant scenes. But maybe what the next step is, is after we fix this part, uh, is that we then have the further discussion about whether or not we really need cabaret licenses as the fee-based, uh, process at all. And that would not happen today, I don't think. But I think the mayor's on to something.
And I think that's something we could even provide in a council memo. Um, it looks like we charge about a hundred and $30 per license. But let me, let me have Lance from our business license department put some information together for you.
So one of the things that I would like, Mr. City Manager, is really dig into, I mean, you just heard, we just made some changes to something that was 40 years old. And that so many times we'll, you know, hold up this code book, which I absolutely cannot stand. Um, it drives me crazy to even look at it. Um, just like, let's just say picnic for one, like very different business idea. And I remember when they came in for their license, um, the city looked at them and said, no, it doesn't fit in this book. And I'm like, of course it doesn't fit in this book because it's new and it's innovative and, um, and it's a different concept. So I think we have to really change with the times and especially our small businesses. They are the largest job creators in this country. I really want to dig in, um, from a full workshop. And one of the things that I want to, um, look at, and I'm not quite sure what the business strategy is or the licensing that happened. But I was at a little pop-up event and it was probably about 25 women. Um, some of them make candles and some of them make doormats or they make skincare. I mean, literally these, these are women just starting on a shoestring, small business. I mean, we're talking small. They're like, they don't have any employees. They are literally doing this, um, out of their homes and trying to get that sort of startup. Well, I was sitting there and all of a sudden someone from the city walks in and says, where's your business license? And they were like, what? You know, and I think, um, those are the kinds of things that, that are sort of a hindrance. Um, and I think the business license should fall under the business that is hosting that event at the time. I think it's a great way for businesses to sort of add a different flavor from what they originally do, um, to also sort of attract new businesses or new customers. And so I feel like we're making it harder and not to mention, like, it felt very like policed and just very awkward. I, I was sort of embarrassed for the city. I was like, what? What are you doing? Um, so I, those are the things I want to dive into because I don't think, um, maybe it's a, a certain level of a, you know, of, uh, sales receipts. I don't know what it is, but I just, these small businesses are trying to do everything they can to make it. And for us to like walk into, you know, a venue and say, where's your business license? Um, and some of them didn't even know they needed one, right? And so I, I just, and literally a lot of times what you're doing, because I did this as a small business owner, is you would have a product and you would literally go out there and try it. Might not even be any reason to have a business license. You want to see, you're sort of, um, you know, testing the waters in the market to see if that's a product that might even sell off a shelf. So I, and it's a very entrepreneurial concept. But I'm just saying, I want to dive into all of that because I, I truly want to be, um, at the biggest little best entrepreneurial city we can possibly be. So thank you for listening. But I think this is a lot of conversation. And probably not here today because I want to get us going. But, um, I think, you know, maybe spending several weeks on workshops and kind of just a big overhaul. But at least a good step here today. Yes, I, I do commend you guys because I know it's taken a long, a lot of time. So thank you.
Uh, thanks. I'll turn it over to councilmember Doer for a motion.
I'm sorry, I have another round of questions.
I'm so sorry.
Sorry, I don't even know why it's, oh, see she does everything right and we.
Well, you're so far away.
We ignore you. So, so far away.
But you are so far away. We will soon have a Ward three person sitting right next to you. Matter of fact, next time I think you should move here. So at least we're getting you closer.
Perfect.
Okay.
Okay. I have a question and I'm, I love everything that everybody said. Basically what we're doing is we're saying instead of a cabaret license, now you have to go to a CUP.
No, um, no matter what, you still need that driver's license.
Right.
Cabaret is still required. This is not on just, no, no discussion today around cabaret license.
Okay.
This is strictly conditional use permits.
But so.
Everything still triggers a cabaret license.
Everything still has a cabaret license, but if you wanted to do something after 11 o'clock, you have to get a conditional use permit.
Correct.
What would you say about a minor conditional use permits? Cause we're saying, now we're still making it harder for people to get these licenses when we're saying that we want to be business friendlier and packaged alcohol. We just changed the CUP to a minor.
Correct. And I think that's a, a very good, um, kind of alternate. When, when we have that minor conditional use permit, we still send out letters to the neighbors. And when, um, we had one recently, um, in one of the Arlington Towers buildings, right? Where we have all these residents and on the ground floor was a, a bar with, with, uh, live entertainment coming in.
So that's, I just wanted to say, I lived downtown and the reason obviously I moved there is because of this, um, activity that's going on there. I like it. I want to be around it. So I'm saying, I understand what people are saying about the neighborhood and the adjacency, but I want to make sure that we have vibrant downtowns and we're not making it harder for people to get their use.
Yep. And so we definitely, that is a route we can definitely do. And from, from a, um, big picture perspective, right? We still have code enforcement providing comments. We still have the police department providing comments. And so we still condition that project. So we can condition them the exact same way, whether it's a minor conditional use permit or a full conditional use permit. Um, one thing just I should highlight as well is that minor conditional use permit does not go to a public hearing. So it doesn't go to planning commissioner or council. It can be appealed. So if a neighbor's not happy with the, the results of that, you know, the conditions of approval, they can appeal it. That would go straight to city council.
But you, uh, one of the examples that I heard, and I think maybe you were just about to talk about it, was with a minor uh, use permit, some of the comments that were heard, maybe you could just talk a little about it. You guys received comments and what'd you do?
We did. So, um, on that particular business example, the, we had a, a small handful of comments, but it was things related to the parking lot next door, um, the loud noise. It's not people in the bar that was the problem. It's people hanging out outside the bar that was the problem. So because of that, we added extra conditions of approval related to safety, related to, you know, queuing, all of those things that we can use our code enforcement team and our Reno Police Department and say, give us some ideas. How do you guys enforce it? Let's put it in writing and require that business to do that.
So the reason why I like that is because it doesn't take the four months for the CUP.
Right.
And it's sort of streamlined in the process. There's still public input. You still get the outreach. You still get the comments and you can still condition it and enforce it.
And we can still pull it at any time, right? The good thing about that, that, that approval is that we have the ability to say, you're not following the rules. We're going to pull that.
Thank you. Thank you.
All right.
So let me just make sure I understood, Ms. Foose, from the discussion that you had with, uh, my colleague from Ward five. You're saying that what is proposed here on this slide and set of things which we have been discussing would still require a full conditional use permit?
Yep. I think, oops, I think what we're saying is box number one.
Those are to be allowed by right.
Allowed by right. If you want to exceed any of that.
Yep.
Instead of a conditional use permit, it would be that minor conditional use permit.
Okay, great.
And I'm, let me just make sure that I'm, make sure. My understanding was the box on the top. What you're doing is you're expanding, um, the ability, let's say, to not have a CUP.
Right.
For all of these things. You're saying as long as you do these things, you don't have to come in. And I think that's a very important step forward. Um, what you're also doing though, is keeping a backend so that if it doesn't meet these conditions, we have a process.
Yep.
And I'm very comfortable with the process. I think that the complaints that we get are mostly where residents come into conflict and we should give them a public hearing. It's not even with us. It's with the planning commission, correct? That's how this is set up.
The way it's proposed with the conditional use permit is a public hearing.
Right.
What we're talking about is changing that to make it a minor conditional use permit.
I understand.
Yep.
But I was very comfortable with the way I've, I think I've said it three times already, that you have pulled back the requirements already in this proposal.
Correct.
And I really appreciate it and I think it's right. I think it's good to keep a safeguard and that's just my personal perspective. And I'd rather deal with it stepwise. Let's see if this works. If you want to go further, some other, I know you have like 300 new eight, Title 18 changes. I'm up for discussion, but I'd like to at least take a very important first step as you've outlined. So.
Councilmember Doer, can I get a motion?
Yeah, I would, I would motion to, um, uh, include in the final motion eh, your proposals that you've outlined and discussed with us here today.
Okay.
As, as you have written them.
I have a motion. Can I get a second?
Second.
Okay. The motion by councilmember Doer, second by councilmember Weber. Discussion, Metta Mayor. Okay, Ms. Taylor.
So there's, I just wanted to have a little discussion that we as a body are not comfortable with a minor use permit. We want to go with a full CUP permit when we just said with alcohol.
You asked me.
Well, I guess I'm just bringing it up for a discussion. We just, we, we want to make it easier for businesses to operate. And in our last motion on packaged alcohol, we did the same thing from CUP to minor.
It's just, uh, my perspective since I'm being asked, is that, uh, buying packaged alcohol is a very different activity than, um, creating, um, noise that could potentially affect residents. And we've had met, you know, eight years of experience with these kind of complaints. And I'm very interested in taking a major step forward, which would relieve them of getting permits for these top activities. As long as they follow the rules. Still have to get a cabaret license, but they wouldn't have to get a conditional use permit. And, and so I, I think they've struck a good balance. So that's just where, where I'm at. I think they've relieved requirements that are there today. Six, six things. But you could balance it out with a, uh, minor, couldn't you?
In my opinion, I think we're making it a little bit more challenging for some of the businesses downtown with a CUP.
I don't think that's the intent though.
I know it's not the intent, but I think it is. And a minor conditional use permit would allow us the same affordability with checks and balances and a hearing and.
And just add some clarity. I mean, would, do they have to get a, let's start at the beginning. Do they have to get a CUP now? I think that's your base question. And then what are we taking away?
Businesses today in downtown only trigger a minor conditional use permit. That's in our downtown area. So we are making it harder for today's downtown businesses that want to operate with live entertainment past 11.
Okay. Well, that was not our intent. But you're saying that this is a citywide ordinance. And I thought we had downtown, 24 hour, et cetera. You already explained that. So maybe you can just parse it a little as, as Ms. Taylor has asked.
So the way the code is today, what we're enforcing today, if you have live entertainment in downtown, you have to do a minor conditional use permit.
All of it.
Everyone in downtown.
Every single person.
With cabaret.
Yes.
Yep.
But you're now relieving all of those people of getting that minor.
So as long as, and so the question is, are most of our downtown bars and restaurants with live entertainment open past 11:00 PM? And if they are, we're making it harder for them because now they have to get a conditional use permit. And you know, we're coming in.
Are, are, are they open after?
There's many, many bars.
Yeah.
Most of them, um, open past 11:00 PM.
And they have cab, live cabaret?
If they have, if they have live cabaret, then they're allowed to do that today. Any new bar that comes in, right? Based on our current code, not this one, but the current code. If a new bar comes in tomorrow and they want to open with cabaret, they have to get a minor conditional use permit today.
Before we make a change? Today, they have to get all of them.
Any new business, anything that already has its grandfather name.
So that's my understanding as well.
Yep.
That they all have to get a minor. And what we're saying is. That they all have to get a minor. And what we're saying is, hey, you don't have to get anything.
Unless you want to op, if you want to have live entertainment past 11:00.
Reserving, okay. So maybe it should be a minor.
Yeah, it sounds like we have reached some moment of clarity, but because there's a motion and a second on the table, I'll call for the question.
I can withdraw the motion. I mean, I, I didn't understand. Do you want to say something, Mr. Woodley?
Yes, if I may.
Mr. Woodley, the floor is yours.
I, I feel I have a responsibility. I'm here. Our PD isn't here. From our perspective of enforcement, live entertainment that occurs after 11:00 p.m. is a different animal, what we see out on the streets, in the neighborhoods, dealing with residentials in proximity. It's different behavior past 11:00 p.m. That's our concern. That's why we do like the public input and we do like the conditional use permit because, I know it's cliche, but nothing good happens after midnight. And that is a real situation for us. So I, I can't be here and not speak up because I can hear the chiefs telling me tomorrow.
Yeah.
But it is, it is, it's a different experience past 11:00 p.m., live entertainment.
So Mr. Woodley, your professional opinion and judgment is that the original motion made by Councilmember Dewar and seconded by Councilmember Weber is the appropriate motion, given your professional experience?
Yes, sir.
Okay.
All right, I'll stick with it.
Thank you.
Versus the minor.
Yes.
Yes.
Okay.
So I'll call for the question now. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye. Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries, four to one.
Okay, last one. This one's quick and easy. Adult business. This one's very simple. We allow adult businesses in three different zoning districts. It's industrial, industrial, commercial, and mixed employment. In addition to being allowed in those zoning districts, we say you can't be within a certain distance of things like schools, preschools, playgrounds. There was a mistake and we didn't require those locational criteria in the mixed employment zoning. So this is not something new. This is an oops. The old zoning code didn't even have mixed employment zoning, so there was some discrepancy there. But this is a very clean one. We just want to make sure if you have an adult business in a mixed employment zoning, we still don't want you within 750 feet of any of those sensitive uses.
I'd be prepared to make a motion if...
Councilmember Dewar, the floor is yours.
Yeah, I mean, I don't know if people have questions, but this is just a correction in the code that was an accident. So I'd like to make the motion to approve, to include in our final motion that adult businesses would come into conformance with the original intent when we set out the zoning.
Any future business moving forward.
Any future business, excuse me?
Yep. It's, we're not grandfathering any, I mean, if, if you have an approved adult business, we can't touch it.
Right.
So any new one coming in
Right.
has to follow these rules.
Right. That, that is it. Thank you.
Okay.
I have a motion. I have a motion by Councilmember Dewar, a second by Councilmember Weber. Any additional questions? Hearing none, I'll call for the question. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Nay. Motion carries unanimously.
Thank you, guys.
Thanks, Ms. Foose. I know that this is an awesome amount of work that your staff has undertaken and, and we're going to see you a lot in the coming months, which I enjoy very much. So thank you for that.
Great.
Okay, Madam Clerk, I know that...
City Attorney Hall, yeah. Do we need them to make one final motion to refer the ordinance for second reading and adoption?
Yes.
Yes, please. So I need one final motion to refer the entire package.
Put that up on the screen again.
Sorry, give us just a second.
Or maybe it's attached.
Okay, where are we at?
Making our final motion. All right, Madam Mayor, Madam, or Mr. Vice Mayor, I would move to uphold the recommendation of the planning commission and refer for second reading and adoption.
Okay, I have a motion by Councilmember Dewar, a second by Councilmember Weber. Any additional discussion at this time? Hearing none, I'll call for the question. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously.
And just to be clear, it was subject to our previous motions. Okay.
Okay, Madam Clerk, I think we're on to item G1. I'm going to turn the meeting back over to Madam Mayor, but before we do, can we take a 10-minute comfort break?
Good idea.
Thank you.
Okay, let's do that because last time we did lose our quorum. So let's take a 10-minute break and then we'll be right back.
All right, Madam Clerk, are we ready?
We are ready.
Thank you so much. Okay, I'm gonna send it back to you. This is item G1. I think this is the item that everyone has been waiting for, and I appreciate everyone's patience in the room. I'm gonna send it back to you, Madam Clerk. You can give us a presentation, what that looks like. I know we coordinated it under your office, so, or we can take public comment right now, and then you can give us a presentation. So let's go with public comment.
Let's do public comment first. We do have eleven speakers that have signed up to speak in person, so we'll go ahead and start with that. If you are in Zoom and would like to make public comment, please raise your hand at this time. Our first public commenter today is Jamie Chapman, followed by John Killoran, followed by Lily Baron. And again, please state your name for the record, and you will be given three minutes.
Great, thanks. My name is Jamie Chapman, for the record. Hello, Madam Mayor and City Council. I am proud to be standing here in front of you again today, representing First Let It Glow, and now as a representative of my neighborhood and my community. I do not take running for Ward Three City Council lightly. As I pedal my pedicab through the neighborhood every day, I encounter businesses and residents. I took into account these business owners and residents of Ward Three before I decided to put my name in. I know this service is a true dedication to my neighbors, and I would be proud to represent every person, every neighbor, and every business that I ride my bike past. I love helping my community, and my professional aspiration has endeavored me to elevate my neighborhood. Even without this appointment, I am working to make our community a more safe and vibrant place for tourists and residents alike. As you can see, I've demonstrated this with Let It Glow, my small business promoting Reno with Pineapple Pedicabs, and everything I wish for the future. I am proud to be a part of the Board for Midtown District and Truckee Meadows Bike Alliance, and I hope to incorporate this advocacy into my position. I believe that our community needs to shape our city. In other words, we need to be the change and to make things happen to make this city a place that we are proud of. Ward Three represents both the revitalization, oops, sorry, represents the community and the workforce for the revitalization of Reno. My neighborhood is the line chef, the bartender, the small business owner, and the taco truck. As I pedal my pedicab through the Wells Avenue neighborhood every day, I love this area, and I would love to perpetuate the growth of our community in a leadership role. I am fortunate to be a small business owner that has worked with local government to help cut red tape, create jobs, and to add color and vibrancy to our community. I started Pineapple Pedicabs to show people that there is more to Reno. More than our infamous casinos, there is culture, there is art, and we are becoming a culinary and artistic destination. Through my business, I have seen the local and tourist perspectives, and I know where we need to improve. I pedal through Ward Three every week, and I bring tourists and our community members together. I pedal them to the bars, to the breweries, and wherever they want to venture. I try my best, through my business, to be a bridge that can connect my community to Reno. This position would allow me to be that bridge between the community and local government. Reno is special due to events, culture, and the people. I have worked in direct contact with people in tourism industry most of my life. From my bachelor's in special events and my street experience, I am uniquely situated to serve Ward Three. I sincerely appreciate your time and consideration, and I want you to know, with or without your vote, you will be seeing me giving back to my community and neighborhood and pedaling around, and I hope you will wave me down and let me take you to the next local bar, restaurant, or destination of your choice. I hope you understand my genuine care and commitment for my neighbors and my wish to serve as their representative. Thank you.
All right, great job.
Ooh, three minutes, exactly.
John Killoran, followed by Kyle Edgerton, followed by Marie Rodriguez.
Madam Mayor, Members of the Council, City Manager Thornley. For the record, John Killoran, forty-two-year Reno resident. First of all, Madam Mayor, I couldn't agree with your sentiment more about this date every year being a celebration of your mom. Once upon a time, this young boy was born on Mother's Day. So I know what it's like to make that day even more special every year, as it was for us, as we celebrated our date every year. I want this message today to be a message of thanks, first to all of you for undertaking this process without knowing three weeks ago that it would be happening, and taking it under your rule all along while you were also doing your regular business of the day, and for three of you, running your reelection campaigns in their final stages. So thank you very much for undertaking this in the fashion you are, so that we will be able to seat a Ward Three representative by the end of the month. I also want to thank the people who have supported my application and reached out to you. Over the course of the last couple of weeks, I know that some have reached out to me to let them know that they've done this, probably some have not, but that's okay, because I genuinely appreciate their support and reaching out on my behalf. I also want to take note of the eighteen other candidates, including Mike Trudell, who stepped out today but was in it until this point, and the fact that there are nineteen of us in Ward Three who felt compelled in this brief period of time to put ourselves forward because we're passionate and interested in what's going on in our ward and the importance of representation in Ward Three. I would hope that whoever is seated, because today we heard a lot of passion and a lot of interest, a lot of support, and that's wonderful, and I would hope, but I know I can pledge it myself, but if someone else is seated in the Ward Three seat, I hope that they will embrace this energy, passion, and interest that are coming from all different kinds of backgrounds and all kinds of experience. I look forward to the rest of this process today and however it plays out over the next couple of weeks, and thank you very much for your consideration and time.
Thank you so much. Good job.
Kyle Edgerton, followed by Marie Rodriguez, followed by Adrian Feimster Cobb.
Good afternoon. I'm Mayor Sheevy and Councilmembers. My name is Kyle Edgerton, and I am one of the applicants for the Ward Three vacancy. I want to begin with a few words of thanks. Thank you to my fellow applicants for being courageous and involved, people who care enough about Reno to put themselves through this process. Thank you to the staff of the City of Reno for keeping things running while this is all going on. Thank you to my friends and colleagues who sent a message of support to the council. And thank you to my spouse, who has not only tolerated me going through this process, but has actually encouraged me in it. And thank you, too, to all of you who each gave me some of your time this week amidst all the other things you have going on. Each of you had a valuable perspective on this form of public service, and you shared your pride in doing this work, and you were also candid about its difficulties. You all work hard to represent the voters who chose you. In 2010, or 2020, excuse me, the voters of Ward Three overwhelmingly chose Oscar Delgado to represent them on this council. I am not Oscar Delgado. I do not have the same background as Oscar Delgado. I do not look like Oscar Delgado. Pero sí me puedo comunicar como Oscar Delgado. As you know, I'm bilingual, and that matters to the many Spanish-speaking residents of Ward Three, but it also stands for something larger that I bring to this role. I code-switch. I meet people where they are. I connect across different cultural contexts and political precepts. I seek out common ground. Just like the diverse communities it comprises, Ward Three is not a monolith. It's a cluster of distinct neighborhoods, each with their own assets and challenges and needs. I'm deeply committed to reaching into each of these communities, helping them build solidarity and strength, and working my tail off to help them meet those needs. As someone blessed with stable housing, I want Reno to be a livable city where people can not just survive, but thrive. Como dueño de un negocio propio, quiero apoyar a los empresarios de los vendedores de autos hasta los vendedores de lotes. As a bicycle commuter, I need our streets to be safe for all users, so I can get home to our two children at night. I was grateful to discuss these ideas with you over the last week and also to introduce myself. I was born thirty-six years ago at St. Mary's Hospital, and I graduated from McQueen High School. I ran the immigration program at Catholic Charities for half a decade. After law school, I returned to Reno eager to put new skills to work, fighting for immigrants, indigent criminal defendants, and survivors of domestic trauma. I try to live my values, and it would be an honor to bring another dose of collaboration and diligence and humor and love to this council and its work. Applying for this position has been rewarding beyond anything I could have expected. It was a true pleasure speaking with each of you, and it takes zero imagination to picture us working together to share the workload of the important but invisible things that this council does every day, as well as struggling through the hard decisions that make the headlines. Thank you again for this opportunity, for your time, and for your passion, for your work. No matter how this process turns out, it's been a gift to me, and I know that Ward Three will have a great representative on this council. Thank you again.
All right, thank you. Good job.
Marie Rodriguez, followed by Adrian Feimster Cobb, followed by William Mantle.
For the record, my name is Marie Rodriguez. Sorry, I have laryngitis. Good afternoon, Madam Mayor and Councilmembers. Thank you for the opportunity to share a little about myself. As I said, my name is Marie Rodriguez, and my family and I have lived in Reno for twenty-two years. My husband and I own our home in Ward Three, where we have lived for eleven years. For almost four years now, I've been working for the City of Reno at the Police Department as a community services officer. What I love most about this job is that every single workday, I serve and talk to the citizens of our city. I routinely am in every part of our city, from Boomtown to Sted, all the way down to the southern end of Veterans Parkway, and everywhere in between. I'm currently assigned to a patrol team that covers most of Ward Three, so I live there and work there, and the police department's in Ward Three as well. Prior to working for the city, I was an over-the-road truck driver. I've actually driven over a million miles, and I've driven in every one of the lower forty-eight states and three provinces of Canada. I understand how the supply chain and logistics work. On a side note, I'm very good with directions, and I can read a map. And believe me, you do not want to get lost in Pittsburgh or New York City in a big rig. What I have learned from these experiences, as well as my career in the airlines, is the importance of good communication, teamwork and planning, decision-making, and integrity, and accepting setbacks and learning from mistakes, and taking responsibility for those mistakes, seeing opportunities, and never being afraid to try something new. I love Reno. We all do. We want our biggest little city to be the best little city it can be. And in my work, I've found that though I am daily taking crime reports from the community, Reno's citizens love living here. I love that my current job allows me to serve my fellow citizens, and that I have a purpose, and I am making a difference. I'm asking for the opportunity to use my skill set, unique perspective, and experience to do more. Besides being fluent in Spanish, I grew up in Guadalajara, Mexico. I have a natural ability to see and understand another person's point of view, even if I do not agree with it. Reno is growing, and I know the people in front of me are taking the city in the right direction. I'm not going anywhere. This is my home, my city, and I have over two-hundred-and-eighty-thousand neighbors. I want to work with you, Madam Mayor, and the Reno City Council in addressing public safety, housing, parks, and infrastructure, and I should add, code enforcement. I want to do what I can to help, because simply standing here and not being involved is not an option for me. Either way, I will continue serving Reno.
Well, the Reno Police Department is lucky to have you.
Adrian Feimster Cobb, followed by William Mantle, followed by Chaz Blackburn.
Hello, everybody. Hi. Thank you. Good afternoon, Mayor Sheevy, to the City Manager Thornley. Thank you. Also, to Councilmembers Taylor, Duer, and Weber. Thank you. I would like to also add that I would be remiss not to acknowledge the efforts of former Councilmember Delgado. He represented us well, and he will be greatly missed. Thank you all for your hard work, building up our city and working to bridge the divides between our communities and the efforts of progressing our city. Also, I want to mention this opportunity to present as a candidate. Thank you for your consideration for the appointment of City Council Ward Three. I'm Adrian Feimster Cobb, fourth-generation Nevadan, born in Washoe. I've lived in this community for more than twenty-two years. In fact, my family has contributed to the progress of the culture in Reno for more than one hundred years. From my great-grandfather Luigi Giacconi Mendocino on the railroads, to my grandfather Lonny Feimster Senior, World War II vet and mail carrier in that same very neighborhood, to the seventy-nine years of service from my grandmother as a humanitarian in education she championed. Also Lonny Feimster Junior, civil rights champion, Darrell Feimster Senior, City of Reno and community advocate, Robert Feimster, the first group of African-American firefighters. I understand and am committed to this legacy of service. I would like to say that I hear the awareness for the desire to fill this role with diversity and have representation for this community. It is the first majority-minority community. It almost feels ominous that my uncle Darrell Feimster Senior was also appointed as the first African-American male for this role. One of five minorities that have ever served this body. He and Oscar Delgado worked on many efforts, like keeping Duncan Trainer open, as well as the efforts to keep Trainer Pool open, the tennis courts, food distribution, lunches, services, after-school meals, recreational activities, and other community partnerships. I'm aware of this uniqueness of what the community needs. I, too, will contribute to this legacy of service for this beloved community that bridges deep into the roots of my family. I would like to say that I do acknowledge that there's approximately thirty percent of English-as-a-second-language-speaking community members in this ward, and of that twenty-six percent in the City of Reno. I am prepared. And also, with the Building Trust comes a name that you recognize. Feimster is widely known. It is trusted, and has been a source in this ward for many public officials, community members, and others. I have a host of communities and boards I've served on, and I realize the clock is ticking. So I want to encourage you to please read the public comments that were submitted in my favor in support of me in this role. Please consider how widely I would have reach serving in this capacity, and what I could do with that trusted name to bridge the gap, to work on what we know are very unique, very uniqueness about this ward compared to any other ward. Thank you.
Yeah, thank you so much. Good job.
William Mantle, followed by Chaz Blackburn, followed by Andrea Peltow.
William Mantle, for the record. I actually wasn't gonna speak again. I already had three minutes earlier, and I think I said pretty much my piece. But on the way over here, because after the recess, I ran over the DA's office to try to help somebody with about five grand for their family, and then came back here. They got their money, which is good. But when attempting to cross the street at East First Street, there was an elderly gentleman there who was waiting, and waiting and waiting, and I'm looking around and wondering why he's waiting. Your crosswalk light doesn't work. Did you know that? Yeah, it's been out today. So I put in a Reno Direct request. It's just wanted to let you know that. But on, to further that, I am an avid user of Reno Direct, and actually encourage all of my friends, family, and everyone else, like, you got a problem? You see something? Say something. So if you were ever to pull public records of Reno Direct requests or non-emergency records, you would see my name a lot. And I say that just to state that, you know, there's a whole lot that all of you do, that all of we do, and I'm sure, a plentitude that every single candidate does, that's hard to see and hard to distill into a part of character and personality. But I think what we've seen so far today, again, is just you have an amazingly difficult choice, and you have so many brazen, bold, and great candidates to choose from, that I don't envy you your position, but I do thank you for your consideration and your time. Thank you.
All right, thank you. Good job.
Chaz Blackburn, followed by Andrea Peltow, followed by Gabriel Maya.
Chaz Blackburn, for the record, and I just wanted to say, I do a lot of public speaking, but I don't think I've ever been as nervous as this morning. So I want to give you guys credit, because this is a whole nother setting.
You did great.
It's very difficult, right? But I'll just jump into it, since I might not have another opportunity. I definitely support increasing public safety budget. A safe city is a prosperous city, and it's extremely important, especially supporting our first responders, secondary responders, and healthcare workers. our first responders, secondary responders, and healthcare workers. I partner with Nevada Peer Support Network and have the support of President and Battalion Chief Derek, and that's something that needs to be introduced at the academy level and encouraged, not just currently, so that they are indoctrinated with pre-vetted resources to be them best selves and for their families. To change the community, they deal with the community every day, so them being the best selves is going to serve our community. I also do support regionalizing fire and working towards that. Because of call times, I think that as we continue to build that regional partnership, it's extremely important. And I also, if I could change any policy, it would be ADUs, accessible dwelling units, because though it's not the biggest answer, it would help with housing. I've seen some success stories recently in Sparks and the outlying areas, and I think that it not only generates revenue for that family, but also will help with housing a little bit as we get denser. I also am really big on mental health with the Drive to Live. Eden's a good friend of mine. I helped her establish the nonprofit. We'll be doing a big event. Hope you guys can make it next September, and it's for suicide prevention, which I'm very big on. I've been helping Paul Anderson with the Mayor's Challenge and Governor's Challenge and different things. I think it's really important that we provide mental health resources to our community. I'm also on the board, helping create a grief resource center for the entire community, because that can de-escalate it from rising to the level of suicide. We did have to dispatch a team of chaplains, actually, the special meeting on August 29th to Remza, because we had another hero fall. And it is important that we provide resources to these people, and starting with the top down. So I think Deputy Chief Oliver is a great choice for Police Chief, as well as the Undersheriff. Those are two really great candidates, I want to say, and they definitely have my support, both of them. And I just really hope I get the opportunity. I told a lot of people to stay home today and just call in. I was hoping you guys were going to play the voicemails, but that's okay. You have the transcripts. But I hope I have the opportunity to really dive into specifics. One of the things is Parks and Recs. I'm looking forward to the 2023 report. We talk about mental health and wellness, you know, getting outdoors and enjoying that's extremely important, specifically in Ward Three. If you look at the NABs reporting, it's four calls for issues, four calls, four calls, and then right around my house, there's four parks that had 15, 16, 14, and 12 calls for issues with displaced population individuals who are having a tough time. So I would call an RPD and a CSO officers to evaluate that. So thank you for your time and consideration. I hope to speak with you all more, and I thank you for the opportunity to be up here. Thank you so much.
Good job. Good job.
Andrea Peltow, followed by Gabriel Maya, followed by Courtney McKimmy via Zoom.
Good afternoon, City Council and Mayor Shivi. So thank you again for letting me practice my public speaking.
You're doing great. You're doing fantastic. Take your time.
So I am again up here to support Chaz Blackburn. And again, he's the only person that I've heard so far today mention seniors, and you know, being well aware of the Reno Senior Advisory Committee. You know, I know how important seniors are to the people in Reno, and you know, we're all trying to work together. And as a young person, you know, I think Chaz can really bring together, you know, the seniors and the young people. And you know, and I talk a lot about, you know, how important it is to bring people together and to work together, because no one individually, you know, can seem to get anything done. And you know, he's spoken to the seniors in Sparks, he knows the seniors in Reno, so he's also part of the senior coalition of Washoe County. So I know, you know, he's reached out and met with Senator Cortez Masto, he's met with Governor Sisalak. And so it doesn't seem like there is any area, you know, that he has not delved into, you know, just again, trying to say how we all need to work together to be able to accomplish good things, you know, for Reno and for the whole area, because neither Reno nor Sparks, you know, can accomplish it on their own. So thank you very much again for listening to me.
Marie did a fantastic job.
And please consider Chaz. Thank you.
Good job.
Gabriel Maya, followed by Courtney McKimmy via Zoom, followed by Camila Bywaters via Zoom.
My name is future Councilman Gabriel Maya. I've been thinking about this whole process and how all of this is pretty unique to me. This is the first time I've ever done anything big like this, and I want to extend my appreciation to each one of you. Being born and raised in the San Seven Five, I take with great pride in trying to represent my Ward Three. I was actually checking the map right now, and I've been living my whole life, basically, in Ward Three, so I'm pretty proud of that. What I bring to the table is pretty simple. I may not have the extended background as other candidates do as far as public outreach and all that kind of cool stuff, which I've been noticing, it's a lot that people do here. But I do bring a lot of management mentality into this. Being in HR with my company for five years, and now participating in different management roles, as I come in my work clothes, because I actually just came from work, because I was doing leadership training over there as well. So, more than anything, I'm just really happy to be in this position, to be able to represent all the Hispanics in my ward, knowing that 40% or more of the Ward Three is Hispanic, and I'm the first-generation American, the oldest of six. And you know, it's really hard to, a lot of Hispanics to actually identify with anybody with City Council or any type of form of government, because we don't have that much representation in city government, and I want to be one of the first people that can partake and put a path forward for the next generations to come. And therefore, still pretty nervous. But...
You're doing great.
Appreciate that. Like I said, I'm really proud of Ward Three and all the work that you guys have done as a council, and all the work that Oscar Delgado also did. I'd take, one of the main reasons why I'm standing here right now is because of him, because of his leadership, and about what he did for our neighborhoods in downtown Mar-a-Loma. And so I want to conclude my time, and I thank you for everything.
You did it. You made it. Yeah? Thank you. Good job.
All right, Courtney McKimmy via Zoom.
Hi, sorry, I had to join as an attendee. Can you all hear me okay?
We can. Please state your name for the record and begin speaking.
Thank you, Madam Clerk.
Can we see?
Madam Mayor, Council Members, for the record, my name is Courtney McKimmy. I refer to my comments from earlier this morning on this agenda item, but I did want to let you all know that I am here virtually and had to take a meeting across town, but I've been listening in. I did also want to note a letter of support from my former colleagues at the Nevada Small Business Development Center that was submitted for the record and should be in your meeting materials. Thank you all again for taking the time to speak with me over the last two weeks to discuss this process and to learn more about my priorities for the ward, and congrats to all of my fellow applicants for putting your name out there, and thank you for everything that you do currently for our community. So thanks again.
All right, our next public commenter via Zoom is Camila Bywaters. Camila, please unmute, state your name for the record, and begin speaking.
Thank you. Madam, my name is Camila Bywaters. I am the president of the Las Vegas Alliance of Black School Educators, and the Vice President, Tracy Lewis. We both serve as a co-chair for the National Action Network Education Committee in Las Vegas. And thank you, Madam Mayor Shivi and the Council Members. I am here today to express support for Adrienne Feimster-Cobb as the appointed member of the council. Currently, I'm a PhD student and instructor at UNLV. I prepare pre-service and in-service teachers for the field of special education. And as an instructor of a multicultural perspectives course, I always encourage my students to lead with a social justice lens, and to be aware and always elevate the voices of the marginalized. Today, the Reno City Council has a beautiful opportunity to lead with social justice and equity, and has the wonderful opportunity to diversify the board. We believe that appointing Adrienne Feimster-Cobb to this role would be a phenomenal experience for our community. She is prepared, she is compassionate, and she's ready to serve her community. She stands on the shoulder of her family, who are definitely, have been and are civil rights activists. She is well-prepared, and she will definitely have the ability and be willing to elevate the voices of minoritized communities and the marginalized. We need Adrienne as a voice of justice, a voice of diversity, a voice of compassion and commitment, and a voice of equity. Thank you so much for this time.
All right, Madam Mayor, our final public commenter today is Lily Baron.
Good afternoon, everybody. I prepared a speech, but I'm going to spare you, because I think that I just want to thank everyone who previously commented on my behalf. I'm incredibly moved and just very honored to call Reno my home. So thank you, everyone who came out and took their time and were working outside in the lobby and coming back in and everything like that. I really appreciate everyone taking their time. I am here to ask to be considered for appointment for Ward Three. This is a ward with 60% renters. I think that that's one of the most important things to focus on right now. I am deeply involved statewide in housing, in multiple commissions and boards, so I think that this is a crucial time where my voice would be really helpful. I do have a unique understanding of what's happening across the state because of these. We sit on a governor's board for homelessness to housing, as well as the Nevada Housing Justice Coalition, and also the Nevada Housing Coalition, which are all very different, if you're familiar with those. And just two weeks ago, had the esteemed pleasure of meeting with your staff for about three and a half hours about legislative priorities and everything coming down the pipeline. So I feel like right now, coming into session, I really do know kind of what's going on behind the scenes and how the sausage is made, and that's where we need to be. That's where Reno needs to be at a state level. I really appreciate seeing, you know, I've had the pleasure of watching Councilman Duer and Mayor Shivi testify at the legislature, and I'd like to see more of that, and I'd like to be able to inform some of those decisions as well. We have heard a lot about community activism and other things that I do in the community, and I'm very proud and thankful to be able to do those things. However, I do have other qualifications. I know that this would not be a, you know, gardening committee, and we wouldn't be able to talk about housing all the time. I'm also a proud person who can sit through ways and means without falling asleep. I think that that's an accolade that should be mentioned. I also have sat on international boards on diversity and inclusion, as well for the American Federation of Musicians. What I can tell you is that the success of a decision-making body really relies on the diversity of the opinions in that body, and I know that we have had some tough conversations, but we have gone from those tough conversations to courtrooms to resolutions and some really awesome programs together. And I think that we have a lot of that on the horizon, whether or not I am appointed. I would also like to apologize for not being able to meet with all of you yet. It is my intention to do so, but as you know, with the elections coming up, we are quite busy at the ACLU. One final point I just wanted to make was to think about the enthusiasm and the energy that came from folks talking about not having faith in voting, and I would like to see those folks out to vote, and I think that appointing me to this position would help get those people out to vote in about 28 days. So please consider that as well, and I'll be reaching out to all of you as well separately, and thank you again, and congratulations, and good luck to everyone. Thank you.
I cannot believe how much we are seeing you these days.
Man, I'd like to be seeing a little bit less of you, but that's okay. I enjoy hanging out with all of you all the time. It's fantastic. I'm ready. I'm done today. I'm just kidding.
You're just like...
I'll buy lunch. I know. More often, more food and more shirts. So, Madam Mayor, it's a little bit untraditional for us to not play voicemails, and I do recognize that that's a little bit different than our normal process. I would just like to state for the record that we did, as you can see before us here today, receive 59 voicemail comments, which is just short of three hours worth of public comment. Those comments have been distributed to the Reno City Council. They are part of the public record. They have been posted to the Reno.gov public comment portal, and they are accessible to the public if they have any questions or they would like to see copies of those. In the interest of time, we have calculated the votes that we have received, so you can see those here before you today. So in our online public comment form, we did receive 31 total comments. All of them were in favor of an individual. So you can see, we have 12 in favor of Lily Baron, seven for Michael Trudell, who earlier today withdrew his name from the race, and we have received official notification of that as well. Eight written correspondence for Chaz Blackburn, one for Miguel Martinez, one for Adrienne Feimster-Cobb, one for Sean Savoy, and one for Courtney McKimmy. Additionally, in voicemails, we did receive 21 in favor of Lily Baron, five in favor of Jamie Chapman, 31 in favor of Chaz Blackburn, and two in favor of Kyle Edgerton. So we did receive a total of 90 comments for this City Council Ward Three vacancy. And again, those are all accessible online at Reno.gov/meetings on this agenda for those who are interested. Additionally, if you would like to hear them, you can submit a public records request, and we would be happy to distribute those recordings individually, if you would like those as well. So the thing we're moving forward with today, you had 19, you now have 18 eligible applicants. If you can pull up the scorecard?
Can you leave that? One more.
Sure. Can you go back to the other screen? I apologize. Okay. All right. So just to recap where we are today. So on September 29th, Councilmember Delgado submitted his resignation to the city of Reno, resigning from his Ward Three city council seat. What day did... I'm sorry. September 29th. On October... No, September 29th is when we had our special meeting, so I apologize. So on September 29th, this body made a decision to move forward with the at-large... Wow, I'm going to stop and take a breath. There are so many words that have been said today.
This happened to me Monday.
My brain, I know, right?
I could not say all the words that day.
Holy macaroni. All the things have happened clearly today.
On September 29th, this body decided that we were going to follow roughly the same process that we followed to appoint Councilmember Taylor in Ward Five. Councilmember Delgado's resignation was effective on the 30th?
It was actually effective on the 2nd.
The 2nd.
So thank you. Second of October, yes.
Which is a Sunday, yeah?
Mm-hmm.
All right.
So my office accepted applications for this position from September 30th through October 6th. And again, we received 19 applications during that time. Earlier today, as I mentioned previously, Michael Trudell did withdraw his application. That information has been distributed to the Reno City Council and will be a part of the permanent record moving forward. And so today, you are looking at 18 applicants. And again, we received 19 applications during that time. Earlier today, as I mentioned previously, Michael Trudell did withdraw his application. That information has been distributed to the Reno City Council and will be a part of the permanent record moving forward. And so, today you are looking at 18 applicants. What you see here in front of you, up on the screen, and each of you have it in front of you, is a scorecard that we are seeking up to five names to be selected by each council member at this time. And what we would do at this moment is go ahead and move into a recess period so each of you can fill out your scorecard, indicating those members of those applicants that you're interested in moving forward to the finalists. I will collect those, tally those up. And then, once we reconvene in about 15, 20 minutes, we would go ahead and present the results of these scorecards. And then, you guys can decide, based on those scores, how many of those individuals will be moving forward to the finalists.
Madam Clerk, for clarity, you're not looking for a ranked list, right? You're just looking for an X next to the name.
Correct. So, just an X next to the name.
Can you repeat that?
Yep.
Because I think people always look at it and go...
Yep, absolutely. So, I don't want a one through five. I just simply want an X next to up to five of those individuals that you would like to move forward. At that point, we will collect all of those totals and present you with all of the votes so that you can see where your tops and where the votes have fallen. So... With a pen, not a pencil. Preferably in blue if you have it. I have extras.
So, can I just say, first of all, I am so beyond impressed with the level of applications that we received. I got to tell you, so much public service on a lot of those applications were incredibly impressive. I saw that a lot. I mean, we've actually done this, I think, four times. I think we've had Bobzian, Reese. I mean, it's really hard to believe. What I would say is I really want all of you to stay engaged. When we do the appointment process, we get a lot of people that apply. But whenever it comes time to run for office, a lot of people don't. And we really, really need people to run for office because you're our future. I can't stress it enough. We also have boards and commissions here at the city of Reno. I would encourage all of you that are passionate about this to get on a board. We have a lot of openings. And a lot of times, you know, people will just apply and then they don't show up. And, you know, those kinds of things. I mean, honestly, like, every single one of these applications were absolutely stellar. I was so impressed. Really, really difficult. This has been the most difficult. I don't know why exactly. Well, I think because of the level of applicants. This will probably be the hardest, most difficult that I've ever seen. But I really would like to encourage everyone, please run for office. Please reach out. We have plenty of boards and commissions. You can get involved. And also, I got to tell you, I dislike this very much. It is tough, tough, tough. I'm sitting here right now feeling sick to my stomach, quite honestly. And then, I'm changing back and forth. And, oh, you know, I mean, honestly. But what I want to point out is, I think where I'm most proud is that the people that came and they spoke on your behalf and how much they love you, how much they supported you, that is what counts most, not what this council thinks. It's what those people that took the time out, out of their day, when they could have been spending it with family or making money or going to work, whatever that looks like. But they came here to support you because they love you and they believe in you. And I think, like I said, more than anything, that's what matters most. And again, not what we think. Because you know what's sad about that? Like, I didn't get to meet with everyone. I'm sure, I don't know about you guys...
About half.
Yeah, it's a really difficult... I'd like to change that in the charter. I think it's ridiculous. So, Charter Committee, I think we had someone out here from Charter Committee. That needs to change. But there just wasn't enough time to meet with everyone. And that I did not like. I tried to as many as possible. I'm sure my colleagues did too. But I guess the biggest message is, please don't give up. We need each and every one of you. Your voices matter. We need you at the table. Like, Chaz, you were talking about mental health, something I'm so passionate about. Lilly, I put you on arts and culture because I think you're amazing. You know, all of you... Mr. Edgerton, I had a wonderful conversation with you and your background, your history. Mr. Mantle, I know that you've ran for office so many times. And I love that you're doing it and you keep doing it and you need to keep doing it. And my point is, is because, you know, you're putting yourself out there. And when you put yourself out there, you open yourself up to tremendous scrutiny. And I love that you go out and do it anyway because I know how hard it is. And I've really enjoyed our phone conversations over the past couple of days. So, each and every one of you have this special talent. You bring something to the table. So, I just want to say at the end of the day, this is tough. This is tough, tough. And I want to remind anyone that I know there's a lot of people listening because, you know, I think we took a lot of scrutiny in the media for doing this process. And it was going to be six to eight months to leave the seat vacant. And how is that fair? Then, we just did that in Ward Five, but it wasn't okay in Ward Three? And so, my hope is, after this, I hope each and every one of you run because I think all of you are tremendous assets to the city of Reno. This is probably the most difficult I've ever, ever experienced. But I am so impressed with the level of engagement, your talent. But most of all, the people that came here to support you because they absolutely love you. Some people never even experience that in a lifetime, ever. So, you should be very, very proud. Anyway, okay, go ahead. I was going to say, Madam Vice Weber. Go ahead. All of us are confused of where we're at today. Go ahead, Councilwoman Weber.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. And I just want to say thank you to all of you, every person that took the time to apply. And I talked to many of you, but for those that I didn't talk to, thank you, thank you, thank you. Because it's so important to make sure you get your name in. If you have any interest, get your name in. And so, I was so excited to talk with those that I did and with those that I didn't. I'm sorry that I didn't get to do it, but that's my... I just am so proud of each and every one of you for putting your name in. Because if you didn't do it, you wouldn't be sitting here. And then, I'm just really excited that you all took the time and the effort and the energy. And you're all so great for doing so. Thank you.
Councilwoman Dur.
Yeah, thank you. I have similar comments as my colleagues. I was so impressed with the pool of people that applied, the depth, the quality, the interests, the personalities, the dedication to Reno. You said it, and I was going to say it, Madam Mayor, that I actually found this more difficult than our last round because there were such good candidates. And I did take an opportunity. I met with about 10. I couldn't meet with all 19. But pretty much if someone reached out to me, I met with them. And I really appreciate that reaching out, the conversations that we had. I feel like I built relationships that didn't even exist before that or strengthened them. And so, I want to echo the mayor's comments about getting involved. You know, if you're not selected today to go to the next round, then think about, could I serve on a neighborhood advisory board? Just for start, I want to point out that Ms. Weber, myself, and several others served on the neighborhood advisory boards, Oscar Delgado, in fact, Paul McKenzie. That's how we got our start, was diving right into the basic issues. And I have to commend that. I know we have many opportunities to serve, but that one in particular, there seems to be almost a common thread, that that is kind of a proving ground and an interest ground for doing this next job. So, thank you so much. Very much challenged process in terms of the high caliber of folks. So, if you're not on my list for whatever reason, it doesn't mean I didn't think the world of you. I just want to express that.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I'll be brief. I think one of the things I wanted to point out was we had a couple of, I think it must be high school students here today from their government class who are putting in the hours.
Future mayors, hello.
And you all picked a really interesting day to attend local government, let me tell you.
Yes, because this is not normal at all.
Yeah, I mean, but the work that's done in this building has a profound impact on the community. Sometimes it's real easy to get disillusioned with what happens at the national level in Washington DC, even at the state level. It all seems further and further away from your everyday lives. So, the work that's done in this building, sometimes it's not very exciting and sometimes it's about sewer flows. And those are the least favorite of the meetings that we have to take. But really happy to see the three of you here, maybe four of you here today. And you did pick a good day. And hopefully, when you go back to your respective schools, and maybe it's Reno High School, is that true?
Reno High.
Yeah, we always have a series of time during the year when we have folks from Reno High here. You know, our government teachers are really encouraging civic engagement. Without that civic engagement, there's no way to really get involved in the process. And I also acknowledge that in this process, I spent a fair amount of time with our staff talking about the demographic characteristics of the ward. It is not a monolith, I think, as one of the commenters put. It is our most unique ward in terms of its balance. I note with some interest that it's about 53% male, 47% female. I don't think the demographics track a non-binary person. So, it's just what the census data tracked for us. But it looks like under 18 years old is about 23%. The other 77% are over 18. Looks like between the breakdown between looks white is 65% and then all other ethnic composition, background, or makeup is the other percentages, including about 39% Hispanic or Latino. And so, it is an interesting ward. And it is different than some of the other wards. Of course, at the end of the day, we're all Renoites or Renoans, depending on who you listen to. And at the core of it all, of course, is this consistent theme that if you had been here this morning, you would have seen that everybody is trying to serve in the city of Reno in some capacity. Some are doing it through private work that they do, chaplaincy. It could be through advocacy. It can be through a combination of those things. And all of those have a good and valid role in a functioning democracy. So, thank you to those of you who are here who are applicants. Obviously, never a fun process to go through because you're putting yourself out there and laying yourself open to the community in a powerful way. But thank you also to those of you who are here today for your government classes. Hopefully, you'll take back something interesting about this process and pay attention as it unfolds over the coming weeks as we move forward.
All right, go ahead. Councilwoman Taylor.
Thank you. Having just been through this, the hardest part was the waiting. So, I'm just going to say, thank you very much. Let's get to it. And a lot of good candidates. Thank you very much for being here.
And I'm impressed for those of you that stayed because that means you really are committed. Because, I mean, a lot of people, after a while, I think it's hard to kind of sit through a council meeting. It can get very, I think, heavy and wonky. And it can be hard to stay engaged. So, and I also do want to point out, it's not just city council. We need you on county commissions. We need you at the senate level, assembly. There are a lot of different positions. Like I said, I cannot stress it enough. We've got a really important legislative session coming up. I look forward to working with Lilly Baron on that. And there's just so many in county commission. Please, please, because we all need to work together as one region. So, it's not just city council. There's a lot. Even school board. School board is really important. So, I better see some of your names on the next ballot. Not this ballot coming up, but the next ballot. Anyway, okay, Madam Clerk, take it away.
All right, Madam Mayor. So, if the body is open to it, we'll call a brief recess for 10 minutes? 10 minutes? So, we will reconvene at 4:15?
Excuse me, Madam Clerk. So, we are not going to recess to allow council to make their decisions, right? We're going to pick those up first?
They're going to sit here and make their decisions, but we're just going to recess the meeting for the time being.
Super, thank you. Super, thank you.
Do you end up just doing this too? Are you really okay?
Yeah. I played a lot of football, so my body doesn't work.
No, I don't, I mean, but you want to do it? Oh, but I sued you. Okay, well, if you want to do two, I'm okay with it. Just do it two, okay. And you said...
Or you can run the city, be the city manager. Because I don't run the city.
Do I hate you? Oh, so that's... Okay, let's do that. I'm fine with that. That is my comment. Probably so. But let's do that. Good idea. Because I calculated, probably would get more than five. And then, I don't like worry, sounds like you did. Go right, yeah. Yeah. Well, also, right now... He did? He's not nervous. I thought you were saying you were blaming me. Okay. Third. Type two. Type two one, type two two, that's how we actually look. Third and fourth.
Right? Yeah, you're right, you're right. You really did.
Yeah. So, anyway, just so we know, four and four, Miguel and Cal. And then three, three was Sean and Courtney. Also, I called Alex.
First of all, I just, this is the first one I submitted to Madam Clerk.
What, every candidate?
As every candidate. She did not realize it for a while.
I mean, listen, if you want to vote for everyone, I'm not, everyone gets a vote.
I think we can make enough room. I do.
All right. Okay, so just for the record, we're reconvening this meeting at four twenty-three with all members present. Okay, so Madam Mayor, we have collected all of the votes that were provided by the Reno City Council. The numbers that you see in front of you is the full list. So that is not the list that you actually have, which is the kind of the refined and narrowed. But I just wanted everybody to see that we did tabulate all of the numbers. Our total on the bottom, five per council member, so that is a total of twenty-five votes. So Nick, if you can switch to the narrowed results. All right. So this is the document that you all have in front of you in hard copy. So this is the list of twenty-five without our zero votes. And with that, it looks like Kyle Edgerton and Miguel Martinez have four votes total. Courtney McKimmy and Sean Savoy have three votes total. Adrian Cobb, John Killoran, Gabriel Maya and Marie Rodriguez each received two votes. Chaz Blackburn, Jamie Chapman and William Mantle each received one vote. So the decision before you today is how many finalists would you like to move forward? And then, in addition to that, the names of those finalists that you are selecting today.
Okay, I would like to follow the same process that we did with Ward five. And that was selecting the top three. Am I right looking at this, though?
But there's a top four.
Right, so in that situation, there was a clear three that were leading. And in this situation, you have...
So with this, I would say top four. And I would just ask the body for the motion for the top four. Because it's not clear on here.
I would be happy to make that motion for the top four. I'm interested in what my other colleagues think, though. Well, maybe we'll have a conversation first.
Absolutely. Go right ahead.
I think Mr. Reese wanted to speak.
Go ahead. Vice Mayor.
Well, first of all, it's, you know, it can be somewhat anticlimactic because these votes come out and people, these are all real people. And I just want to acknowledge that there can be some frustration and heartbreak in the process. So I'm looking at it in real time and I think there's two arguments. One argument is advance the top four persons. Another argument is advance the top two. I am a little agnostic, but, and I want to be honest, the two people in the three-vote slot, I selected both of them, so I certainly want to see them advance. But I also could understand if we were looking at just the top two. You know, when you get out into these public forums and you have four bodies in the room, it's harder to connect with. I think when Ms. Griffin and I went through this process, there were four people. It just added more, you know, there was more public comment vetting because people come out to support their pervert candidates. And then in the individual sessions, you don't get as much one-on-one time with the person who you think might be the best candidate. But again, I'm not strongly suggesting one way or the other. I'm just saying there is an argument to be made that it would be just the top two. But certainly what the will of the body is, I will support.
Okay, go ahead, Councilwoman Dorr.
Yeah, well, like you, Mr. Reese selfishly, I selected three of the four people that are in the top four. And I would love to see them get interviewed, but, you know, it's not a hill to die on for me. But I do think, even when you were selected initially, we had interviews with four, that we did that and that was very, you know, it worked out well. So I'm fine either way, but I'm kind of leaning towards the top four.
Other questions, comments? You want to give me a motion?
I'll be happy to, but did you want to say something?
I'll go along with, you know, whatever you all... I like the idea of maybe the four now that I'm thinking of it because I'm hoping that the other candidates that may not have come out will come to the sessions that we have in their own community. So I think that it's a good thing.
And I want to remind people, just looking at it, Ward three now has, am I correct, three openings on the NAB?
That is my understanding, yeah.
Okay.
The NAB has some vacancies.
So there's some vacancies on the NAB, which is good, okay.
Okay, so I'll make a motion that we move forward with the top four candidates, which would be Kyle Edgerton, Miguel Martinez, Courtney McKimmy and Sean Savoy.
All right, so I have a motion and a second, any discussions? If there are none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Motion carries unanimous. Okay, Madam Clerk, now tell us what's next.
Okay, so our next steps is that we will be holding public meet and greets starting next week. Our first one is on Tuesday, the eighteenth, at the Northeast Community Center. And then our second one is on October nineteenth at the Neal Road Recreation Center. Both of those will be held as a hybrid option this time. Last time we only did one hybrid and one in person. And this time we're going to be offering both as a hybrid in case the constituents want to connect that way. Additionally, it sounds like several of our individuals are bilingual or have communication of their own that they can provide. But we will have bilingual services available to those who need it as well. And then, once that closes on October twenty-sixth, this body will be holding their interview and selection process at our regular scheduled meeting on October twenty-sixth, anytime after ten a.m. And at that meeting, post-interviews, you will be making your selection and they will be sworn in and welcome to join the body on the dais.
Okay. All right, go ahead, Vice Mayor.
Madam Clerk, I just want to ask, you will facilitate both of the, what did you call them, meet and greets?
That is correct, so...
Okay. All right, go ahead, Vice Mayor.
Madam Clerk, I just want to ask, you will facilitate both of the, what did you call them, meet and greets?
That is correct, so...
Okay, and, go ahead.
It's kind of a two-pronged process. What we have done in the past is that we have asked the constituents to submit questions, so starting later this afternoon or first thing tomorrow, there will be a question submission form up on our website that you can go in if you have any sort of issues or topics that you're very interested in, either a direct individual or the group as a whole to answer, please submit those. We will be offering that form additionally in both English and Spanish. And then, based on kind of the trends that come from the questions that are being submitted is what will drive that conversation. So it's usually two hours. The first hour is reserved specifically for the question and answer session, and then we close out that first hour, and then the second is specific to meet and greet. So it's allowing the constituents directly go up and ask whatever questions maybe we didn't ask in our Q&amp;A session. It's allowing them to connect directly with those individuals at that time.
Well, and I want the public to understand, at least from me, I won't attend either of those. Some council members have, and I'm totally good with that. For me, I will have the opportunity or have had the opportunity to interview or meet with or have conversations with them. I don't want the public to feel like they have to interact with me as a council member. I'm hoping they interact with the candidate, so I watched the last one online. I didn't watch the second one that was at the fire station. So I'll watch, but I'm not going to participate in public, or in person, is what I'm saying.
Thank you for that clarification. So yes, it's not intended to be a time for the council to join that. I mean, you are welcome to, obviously. We would love to have you there. But you're right, it is intended for the public to come out and connect with the applicants to be able to understand what their directives are, where they want to go, and kind of the important issues that they'd like to address within that board.
So, if I may, Madam Mayor. So just so I get this clear, the first hour is like a Q&amp;A. The four candidates would participate. Each of the four candidates would answer the questions that you... That would go for an hour. And then, then it's more casual mingling and going up and talking. Okay, great. Thank you.
Thank you. All right, good on this item? Thank you.
Thank you so much. All right, I'm going to hand it back to you, Madam Clerk. Mr. Clerk. Madam Clerk, whatever. Your change. Mickey, I even got you to sign it.
I did, you have two official copies. All right, so now we are moving on to Item G2, which is an appointment to the Washoe County District Board of Health. So this seat was left vacant when Councilmember Delgado resigned from his position. We do not have an alternate for this board, so because of that, we are looking for this body to appoint one of its fellow members so that we can get a representative on that board.
Okay, do you have any public comment on this item? We do not. All right, thank you. At this time, I'd like to make a motion for Councilwoman Reese to sit on the Washoe County District Board of Health. Second. I have a motion and a second. All those in favor say aye. All those opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Hope you wanted to go on there, Mr. Reese.
All right, moving on to Item G3, which is an appointment to the Civil Service Commission. Madam Mayor, for the record, we did receive public comment for this item. As you heard, several individuals earlier today made a public comment for Asensio Marney Jr. Additionally, he was here earlier, would like to speak in favor of himself. And with that, Madam Mayor, it is your appointment to this board.
Okay, thank you so much. So at this time, again, you said no public comment?
Correct.
Okay, I would like to make a motion for Christopher Benson to appoint to Civil Service. I have a motion, I have a second. All those in favor say aye. All those opposed? Motion carries unanimously.
Thank you. We're moving on to Item H1, which is City Council Comments.
All right. Does anyone want to give us any updates on boards, commissions, and events? Even though there's a lot of them and there's a lot going on. We could be here all day, so. All right, moving right along.
All right, we're moving into closing public comment. I have none registered at this time. For the record, I would like to state that we did receive general public comment, which was either received after 4:00 p.m. yesterday or general in nature. We received 10 letters of support of various items, one letter of concern. And additionally, we did have four voicemails. Again, those have been distributed to the Reno City Council and will be available on the Reno.gov website. At this moment, I am looking for a motion to adjourn.
Okay, everyone's favorite motion. Come on, Councilwoman Weber says she moves to adjourn. All those in favor say aye. All those opposed? Motion carries unanimously. All right, thank you, everyone, and happy birthday, A.J., again.